Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session with the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with SEIU Local 888 Professional Employees Chapter, Department of Planning and Engineering, to how this discussion in an open meeting could have a negative impact on the committee's bargaining position. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the May 24th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Vareano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the gold bell icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you to School Committee Coordinator Lena Parvex for assisting us this evening. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10th, 2023 School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
No movement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Hawkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill. Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening and good evening to all of our school committee members as well. I want to start by remembering four-year-old Mohammed Vafana, who we, you may know we tragically lost last week at Castle Island. Whenever we, whenever we lose a student, we're reminded how precious life is and that it's important as a district and as a, as a community, a school community, that we're there for the family and that we're there for the impacted school. Losing Mohammed at such a young age and in such a tragic way has been very difficult to process for everyone that knew him. I had the opportunity to attend the services for Mohammed and offer my condolences to his mom and family. And our hearts are with Mohammed's family, in particular, his mother, his grandmother, and his grandfather. Our hearts are also with the Lee School and the Lee students and families and staff. We've provided support to the school with our crisis response teams. We will continue to do that and to be there for them. All of our love and strength is with Mohammed's friends and family as they navigate what is truly unimaginable loss. We also want to acknowledge that we had the loss of another student at one of our high schools, and this happened over the last two weeks. But the identity, the family has asked that we keep it confidential. And so obviously, we honor that request, but we are deeply saddened by these losses and our hearts are with that student's family and friends as well. So in their honor, Chair, I would ask if we could do a moment of silence.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. So, you know, as we, as many of you may have seen in recent news reports, there was, The Globe wrote an article that was talking about chronic absenteeism and highlighted BPS and our efforts in making some progress around chronic absenteeism. I really wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the good work that we're doing and really lift up the great work of our team. You know, they're, they're supporting students and families. And as we've shared with the, with the committee, they're continually working with students who have complex needs or really have to work to support themselves and their families and thereby struggle to come to school. Our chronic absenteeism rates are down about 7% for the whole district. And I think the last time I presented out, it was, it was right around that. It might have been a little bit more than that, actually. So that, that's really good that we're maintaining that and improving. I think, you know, the ways in which we are meeting our students, it's so critical, we meet them where they are. We respond to the concerns, you know, what concerns they have. And I think the fact that our team is doing that, both in the schools and at the district level, it's just really a reflection of our intentionality of keeping students at the center. We're seeing some, some drops and some trends as well, in particular, subgroups. For instance, our English language learners, chronic absenteeism is down around 8%. For our Black students, it's down 9%, 10% for our special education learners, and about 18% for our white students. And so we continue and will continue to track using data and disaggregate it by the subgroups, by gender, and certainly by the individual schools. You know, we are encouraged by the progress, but you know, we also are just deeply concerned about chronic absenteeism. When students are not here, they cannot learn and take advantage of what we have to offer. We're taking a comprehensive approach to, to students struggling to attend school, certainly not punitive, and, and really, you know, continuing to increase resources to support the, the many issues that we know keep our students from attending regularly. That's reflected in, in this year's budget relative to ASR and then in next year's budget that is, is up to proposal right now. I think chronic absenteeism, especially since the pandemic, it's, it's a complex issue, as we know and we've talked about. There's many factors to it. You know, everything from homelessness for some of our students' families, you know, to health challenges, to mental health challenges, to being off track with their academics and not knowing how to reengage. We're focused on building strong relationships foremost and establishing deep connections with our students because we know that's the key to bringing them back. And that also extends to their families. And this is a lot of the deep work that our supervisors of attendance support, certainly our social workers support, and, and will with the Community Connector Position support. And that is really connecting our students and families with agencies and resources that will help to stabilize. I really want to applaud the work of Chief Gillian Kelton, along with Brian Marx and Emmanuel Allen, Manny Allen, who, who leads the work to support some of our most vulnerable students and families. And there's no doubt from the data that it's making a difference, but we also know we have to feel an incredible sense of urgency for every day what a student misses and will continue doing so. Early this month, I wanted to share that I had the opportunity to provide a welcome at the inaugural meeting of the Racial Equity Planning Impact Committee, which we call RAPIC. I appreciate, as I shared with them, the teachers, the school leaders, the parents and caregivers that were there, the district partners, and certainly the community advocates who have volunteered their time and their expertise to, you know, to really ensure that, that the district does the real work of ensuring racial and educational equity and that it truly is a through line to the entire system. And that, you know, we're also clear that the, about the impact our work has and is having on our students. So, you know, in alignment with our goal always of eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps. The committee is made up of 27 members who have received what we call calibration training from Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps, ESOG, and the Office of Data Accountability Teams. They've been divided into groups and they'll use a rubric to score seven of our major district initiatives and provide, you know, critical feedback that will go back to district leaders around those initiatives. Some of these include equitable literacy, equitable grading policy, the regional network structure, transformation school structure, just to, just to kind of call out a few. And this is how we ensure that equity is a through line for our district and that we're partnering with the, with the larger BPS community towards transparency and power sharing. So I look forward to continuing to update and also to, to call out, you know, and, and, you know, and praise Dr. Grantson for his leadership in this particular area. So we look forward to keeping the committee updated. A few bright spots, there are many. This is one of my favorite times of year to be in the schools and to just be part of so many different celebrations. May is Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And throughout the month, we hold space to honor the legacy and the accomplishments of the AAPI community. From the arts to education to government, there's many members of the community who have left an indelible mark in our city and in our district. This past week, the city held a panel discussion on the AAPI experience in government at the Boston Public Library. Athena Arroso, one of the co-facilitators from the AAPI affinity group, represented BPS at the forum. Additionally, Richard Chang, who's the head of school at the Josiah Quincy, was featured, or the upper, was, was featured in a conversation with the YMCA CEO David Shapiro and shared his story as a leader and board chair at the YMCA weighing center and the importance of celebrating the achievements of those in the AAPI community. So we will, that, you know, for, for the month of May, continue to keep the API community and celebrate all that they mean to our district and to our city. I do want to shout out, we had a DESI Teacher of the Year finalist and shout out to Luisa Sparrow. She was named, and this is a big honor, one of the DESI finalists. She is nationally board certified with 17 years of teaching experience in the field of special education. She is deeply committed as an educator with passion for providing the very best for neurodiverse students. She's worked at the Perry for the last six years within the school's impairment program for students with disabilities. And she's a member of the instructional leadership team and a Teacher Leadership Fund grantee who has led colleagues in creating inclusive opportunities for all students at the Perry. So we're very proud of Luisa and just want to share and share and send out, you know, how proud we are of her for her accomplishments and recognition thus far with DESI. The Wellness Summit, we held the 16th Annual Wellness Summit on May 16. The event brings together BPS community members to learn about and discuss elements of school wellness and the BPS wellness policy. This year's theme was cultivating belonging. We know that research shows that cultivating belonging at schools builds social connection, improves student health, reduces negative risk behaviors, and truly has a long-lasting effect on student health and well-being all the way into adulthood. Creating a sense of belonging and connection to the school community is important for students' academic success as well, you know, and obviously, you know, supports in every aspect their health and well-being. The summit included a keynote, school staff panel. In the spirit of a true summit, all the participants had time to reflect on, for them, what a sense of belonging looks like, what ways they plan to cultivate belonging in the BPS community, be it at the school level, the district level, or as a community member, and also to commit to what action will they take to, to help to cultivate belonging in their particular work or school setting and community. The event ended with an award ceremony recognizing the accomplishments of BPS schools who were exemplars in implementing components of the wellness policy back in their schools. Nine schools received the awards. Three received certificates of recognition for emerging efforts. All, in all total, over 200 people attended the event. And from the photos that you can see in the slideshow, the event really cultivated young summit participants, which was, which was pretty amazing. Thank you to the staff of the Office of Health and Wellness. They worked incredibly hard, Director Carter and her staff, to make this happen. And thank you also to all of the schools who are award winners and those who received recognition for all of their efforts to promote student health and wellness. We appreciate all of that. Once again, to the committee, thank you for your support as always. It's been nice to get out into some of the schools with you over the past week. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Anyone? Questions, discussion? Superintendent, you forgot about one event, which is today, the renaming.
This is true. This is true, Chair. Chair, you should announce that because you were a student.
Well, I, I will say that we, we had the wonderful opportunity of being in the president's presence of Alma Lewis's family as we renamed the Boston Arts Academy building in honor of Dr. Alma Lewis, who was a wonderful arts educator, did amazing things for the city over many, many years. And I had the fortunate opportunity of being one of her students many, many years ago as a young child, but worked with the school over 30 years and ended my last period there as the parent of a child who also had the opportunity to attend the arts. She's made a lot of wonderful contributions to the city and, and so happy that her legacy will, will live on and story will be told through this wonderful opportunity at the Boston Arts Academy.
That's wonderful. And Chair Robinson shared what it was like to be a student of Dr. Lewis, which was great to hear. We also got to hear from a junior at Boston Arts Academy, Shaumba Sabrina Dabenga Robinson, who is a junior in fashion tech. And she just gave such a wonderful, you know, talk about what it means to go to, you know, Arts Academy and what it means to have Dr. Lewis as somebody to look up to every day in the work that she does. So it really was a wonderful event.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you. Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
Thank you so much for the report, and it's exciting to hear some of the promising trends in reducing chronic absenteeism. So thank you so much for sharing. I have two questions. One is around contracts, the other one will be around exam schools. But to jump in on contracts, I think a lot of people saw on the news this week or this last week around the recent investigation around some improper payment that happened across the system. And I just want to hear if there's anything to us you want to share around what's happening. I read that you call, are calling for outside audit. I just want to know if there's anything more that we should be aware of.
Well, I, you know, I think first of all, we hold all of our employees to the highest standards. And so when something falls short, that will obviously require investigation. And so I can't speak to that. I think in the area of procurement, I also want to make sure that our processes are sound and certainly take recommendation for areas that we can improve. At some point next year, we're building toward having a lot of internal capacity to do this type of auditing. But right now, in this particular area, that's not an area that we have the expertise objectively to do it. And so I felt like having an outside audit would be supportive and helpful. But going forward, as we are in all of these areas, be it transportation, be it data, any of the areas that we've sought outside, you know, we, we are working to develop internal controls around those things. But, you know, just to reassure, I think, you know, we appreciate FinCom's, you know, comments and calling it out. We certainly want to make sure that everything we're doing is, you know, 100% to the law and that our, you know, frankly, that our processes value the relationships with our vendors because we, we really do value those relationships and rely on them.
Of course. And, you know, these are one of those complicated moments. Mistakes happen and, and we want to sort of assume best intentions. But I guess it makes me wonder, you know, like, it feels like every few months there's a spree or a thing that's sort of starts to bubble up around improper data or from the sort of exam school thing we saw to other issues that have been here that have required us to call for external auditing at multiple times. I'm wondering, it's good to hear that you're thinking about sort of local controls, but then at the same time, is there anything preemptive that we're thinking around other parts of the organization that we want to be doing auditing, given some of the other system failures that I think you probably are discovering as you come into the role?
Oh, for sure. I think, you know, again, sometimes the, you know, the audits that have been performed or say the reports that have been performed, they look at a particular sphere but only tangential, right? Like just a small amount of elements. And so we then take in and start to go deeper internally. And so, you know, whether it's like the data audit that Ernest Young provided around discharge and review of student data or IEP completion and compliance, you know, we then take that and that applies to six or seven other things within special ed or within the data that we keep on students. So we're already developing those systems internally and saying, what are the other key factors we need to be looking at? I could say the same with human capital, you know, looking at our payroll. You know, I think we shared that, you know, previously, hiring practices. It really, it's going to run the, all aspects of BPS are being looked at, right? Because our goal is to really lift our system to be an enterprise system that can support the, the type of, the type of equity work we're looking to do for students and schools. I think sometimes when things are done a certain way, for a while, people don't necessarily question it. And that's sort of the value of what, to me, what sort of the internal auditing is, is it allows you to start to question things. And so that's really the work that we're, we're trying to do. I think the other thing is as we do some of these external audits, part of what we're also asking them for in some of the scopes is what are other areas that you have seen based on your experience in that sphere or industry that you believe would be good for us to be looking at?
That's great. Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm hearing you say it's taking these audits one by one, but also asking those partners, are there other places that we might be missing based on what you're finding?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, frankly, as we shared in the SIP, you know, from, at the last session, any one of those areas is so large that in a large urban district, that could be a year's work, right? Of just that one body of work. I think all of the reports from Council of Great City Schools, some of the DESI, and then certainly some of the audits that, you know, we've been, we've been conducting, it's, it is, it speaks to the overall large transformation of a district. So there will be some things that we haven't yet gotten to because we're still working on the, kind of the continued work in the, those particular areas. And so each year, there'll be different areas we go deep on, right? That's how you, that's the best way to kind of, to do it is to sort of outline a timeline where every year you're focusing on particular systems to overhaul, to look at, to make more efficient, to audit. We've just not had the luxury of, at this point, being able to design it that way because we've had so many reports from the start.
Yeah. It'll be good to hear from you when that sort of priority order is developed. And then, you know, I speak for myself, but, you know, obviously, we want to build local controls and then the need for external audits at any enterprise is really important work. So it's not always a bad thing to call in Ernest Young, that's why they exist. But it's just thinking proactively around doing that. So it's not always a response to a news story and it's, it becomes just part of how we're looking to self-correct.
That's right. That's right. And I also think, you know, there are some departments for which, as you know, as we've, you know, said in here and publicly, that we are in the process of doing our searches, our national search for leadership. And so, you know, we also want to be able to work with that leadership as it comes in to be able to say, you know, what would they like to see and know about that department? So leaving a little bit of space for that to happen over the course of the next month to two months as we do those namings.
Perfect. The last question that I have is just around exam schools. I said during our last time together that I would ask about it this week. And I know it's not an agenda item today, but I'm curious if there's any findings initially from the team that you're seeing, any patterns and trends that you think we should know about? And then the sort of top-line question for me is really how many young people who were eligible didn't get a seat based on capacity?
Yeah. So I think the team right now is pulling the data together. We're trying to make it as comprehensive as possible for the committee, and that does take the time. So I'm not in a, I'm not going to be in a position to give you partial answers tonight. I would like to be able to give it to you in the breadth of the context of the whole report. But I, I will say that if there's particular things that you have questions about or you'd like to see, make sure that we can reflect it in the data. You know, we'll, we'll circle back with you just to make sure that those get represented as best we can.
Papi, I will also say this, it feels, I'm, I know that it is like labor to do it, but some of it feels so top-line that it, as a member of the committee, and I'm just saying this, it feels a little tough to be like, it's taking us a month to have this conversation that like, we have systems that can produce some of this data. I know it might not come in a beautiful chart, but, so I'm just saying that. And the fear that I have is the thing that I will always say around these issues, where it's like, you have people who are asking for seats in a particular place and we have capacity in such huge ways across our district. And the more time we, where I think we spend trying to make the chart really pretty, the less time we have talking about solutions for the fall to build capacity elsewhere if it's possible. And so, you know, that's my, that's my plea to have this conversation as soon as possible.
Yeah, no, I know. I, I, you know, I think when we map out the dates, you know, we, we try to kind of map them out with thinking, you know, knowing that each of the school committee meetings requires a lot of preparation for it and the team works very hard for it. And in this particular case, it's, you know, it's also from the time that the assignments are given. So it's not like the data existed in that same way previously. So I think, you know, the June 7th has been the target date of what the team's aiming for. So I appreciate your patience with it and do want to make sure that the questions that you would like to see answered, where, with, in all reason that we have, are, we are able to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions? Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, I echo the comments in particular about external audit and what we all saw. This body, three years ago, passed a internal audit policy. The district does not have an internal audit function. We fall under the City of Boston and they do have internal audit. And this body recognized that shortfall several years ago. And this body recognized that shortfall several years ago. And first of all, we set up an internal audit task force to come up with the right way to have a policy that worked with the city. So we involved the city auditing as well. Um, we brought in experts from around the city. There's a lot of financial experts in the city. Uh, we had the co-chairs of the task force were one of the top external auditors from one of the top accounting firms in the city. And the head of internal audit for Liberty Mutual as an example. Um, we also had a recent graduate of the district on who was studying accounting at a local college. Um, this body worked hard on that proposal and we had the support of the superintendent at the time and a promise to implement if we passed a policy. And we did. And it has not been implemented because COVID happened, right? And that put a lot of plans on hold. Uh, um, I was really disappointed to read that article in the Globe because having a robust internal audit function does several things. Some people consider it to be a gotcha department, right? They're trying to fall, solve, uh, find situations and get people. But when internal audit is working properly, it's not that at all. It actually is a great thought partner as someone who has run business lines in businesses where we have internal audit. I always, I found out they were going to be auditing my department and I was delighted because they were going to give me suggestions on how to improve practices and policies and procedures. It's an opportunity for the district as a billion plus organization for our taxpayers to have faith that we are spending our money, their money, our residents' money and our taxpayers' money properly. And um i- it should not be reactive bringing in external auditors when there are problems. But we should have a robust internal audit system. This is separate from enterprise risk management. There are, there are so many risks that we need to consider, compliance risk, legal risk, reputational risk and financial risk. That's enterprise risk management overall, of which a piece of that is financial risk. And um, there'll be plenty of folks within the district administration that would welcome a robust internal audit system. There were also folks that may be nervous about it. And rightly so. And when people expect you to inspect, they operate better.
Yeah.
Plain and simple.
Yep.
And so, um, you know, Madam Chair, I'm really calling on this body to help this superintendent because I know this is new, right? You know, we're telling you, you've been uncovering a lot of stuff in the past year and, and we're very supportive of that. This is one more thing for you, but I want to remind you publicly of this um internal audit policy that we put in place. The best practices and suggestions we uncovered from folks who were the top practitioners in the city on internal audit. And their willingness to help to make it happen. So when you're ready to hire and put in place, not just one, but it will be several people that they're willing to use their networks to help you find people because it's a tough economic environment, you know, to be high, these people are in demand.
Yeah.
So I, I just calling you to, that, this is an important piece of solving for the challenge that you're facing. And I, I agree with Mr. Cardet Hernandez and I'm echoing his comments that external is great, but we really need a robust internal system. External should be validating that. Um, not leading that effort. And this is among most importantly, it's to build trust among our residents and taxpayers that we are absolutely treating every dollar as it's important. And then it's meant properly.
That's right. Yeah, so um, uh, completely synergy from my perspective on this. I mean, I think in many ways we hold our schools accountable on so many different lenses and levels. Um, and so having that with all of our central systems is going to be critical. Uh, and I appreciate that this was the foresight of the, you know, the committee, um, you know, in the form of a policy. Um, you know, we do have the risk management office that was created. Um, however, as to your point, there's multiple, you know, buckets of the type of risk management that you have to account for um as part of that office. And so that is the part that, um, you know, we're going back to the policy, looking at the recommendations. So that as we build that out and lay that out in the con, you know, over the summer and in the coming year, we are building that capacity in all of our branches. Um, so it, you know, it's helpful to me as a superintendent that you had the foresight to do that. Um, because frankly, it's something we, we would have had to do and at least I, we have the, the policy and the information from those that participated in it as a starting point, which is, which is great. But um, I think that, you know, we have several examples right now which are um still embargoed. But what I can say is that we have developed, uh, once a problem was identified, we've developed our own um, internal uh capacity to, to look at that particular issue. Rerun the data, have it validated by an external and uh, and very promising. That it's clear that we're, um, we've been committed and have the systems to fix it. Um, but that again is in pockets that have already been audited. So, um, I'll be eager to see what the external auditor, um, you know, supplies to us in terms of recommendations and in terms of insight um in this particular area as we are with the others. Um, but the commitment on our part to build out internal capacity for all of this risk management and auditing um is there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam.
Welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other further questions or comments? Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Just one more question because some of the, in my shortish tenure here, I think I get to, that will run out soon. I think I can start just saying I've been here, but we have been talking about this risk management office before you arrived. And so I guess I am curious at the same time, it is always like the elusive, like we are building the risk management office one day.
Yeah.
The risk management office will be here. So I guess I'm curious, like, how far away are we from launch? And if it is, and what could be true, two things can be true, right? Like that this is actually just, it's too difficult to hire externally. Then what is our sort of thought process about hiring a contracted service to do risk management for our organization?
Yeah, so, so the uh, the infrastructure of the office has been created with a director. I think the, right now what we're looking at is based on kind of the, the policy and then the director's doing, um, you know, her own work on this. But what are the areas that we want to build out? Um, so for instance, in this particular one, it's procurement and fiscal. In another, it could have to do with data keeping. In another, it could have to do with, um, you know, special education per se. Um, or more general kinds of uh auditing. Um, so that's the point at which we are right now is building out that structure. Um, and I do feel confident that come next fall, we will have that structure in place. Um, with several more of those positions so that we are starting to build that capacity.
Copy. It's helpful and I know this isn't about you, but I think it's worth it for us here. Like we were talking about the building out of a risk management office, I think at like my first school committee meeting uh, with a different superintendent. And I, in some way too, it was like we were in a similar place. We're like, we're hiring someone who's going to work on the frame and the structure and who comes next. And so, um, I know you got to inherit what you inherited and that, and we're so thankful for your leadership. But I think, I'll speak for myself, it feels frustrating to hear like we're, what feels like we're no further along over a year later in the development of this office than we were, you know, when we first started talking about it.
Yeah.
Need it.
That's right. So I, again, can't kind of speak to the past timeline and the COVID interruption and now. Um, but what I can say is we do have the director. And so that director is actively, you know, and has been working to build out infrastructure. So I do feel confident that come next fall, we will have these pieces or many of the pieces in place. Um, so we won't be doing Groundhog Day with the same conversation.
Perfect. Thank you for making it a priority.
Well, you're welcome. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you all. And if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
Who moved?
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Um, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia, Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The report is unanimous.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you very much, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of a later discussion by the committee. We have twenty-three speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. We will pause the timer while the testimony is interpreted into English. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topics are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Thank you for your cooperation. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. Our first speakers this evening are Emeline Knight Bearstow, Michael Heisman, Kim Emery and Michelle Douglas. Please raise your hand. Emeline is not in the meeting. So I will call to the next person, Mike Heisman. Ms. Heisman?
Oh, no, two minutes. Oh, God. Oh, boy. All right. Mike Heisman, Beja, Dorchester. Given the awful condition of many of our school facilities, a decision to send our children to a new school should be a time of joy. What's wrong with the Shaw and Taylor communities? Why don't they trust that Miss Skipper knows what's best for their children? Over the years, new schools many times have turned out to be curses instead of blessings and done over the bodies of our parents, our children and our school communities. What's wrong with the Shaw and Taylor communities? Nothing. These school communities know what's best for their children. What's wrong with our elected city council that supports the Shaw and Taylor communities? Nothing. I urge you to trust the Shaw and Taylor communities and vote against this proposal that was on the agenda later in the meeting. Our state has imposed an abusive testing system on our children in their schools. M C A S is truly the Massachusetts M C A S, uh, child abuse system. I only have two minutes, so I have to skip some of my testimony. Earlier today, I participated in a lobby day at the State House in support of the Thrive Act. House Bill four nine five, Senate Bill two four six. Over a hundred fifty attended, including some B P S students. This bill would replace the field M C A S high school diploma requirement. Two, prevent D E C from taking over schools with low test scores. Three, establish a commission to study the effects of the current system and make recommendations to the legislature to create a valid and just accountable system. I ask that our superintendent make a public statement supportive of this bill and for the school committee to pass a favorable resolution. I will send you a sample resolution. Another school year will be coming soon. When will Mayor Wu's appointed board cut, conduct an evaluation of Miss Skipper's first year? And how would the public have an opportunity to participate? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Emery. Kim Emery?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. So a major decision by B P S was cutting edge for its time in nineteen eighty-nine. The school-based management and shared decision-making pilot was driven by the idea that school, not the district, should be the place where decision-making occurs by the people closest to it. The vehicle for engagement is the school side council. And this shared governance even far exceeds that envisioned by school councils established by the ninety-three Ed reform act. B P S's one hundred percent adoption of this model was bold in two thousand and six by ensuring that schools have strong decision-making processes with transparency and broad family engagement. So thank you all who supported it then and cultivate and nurture it still. We've come a long way since nineteen eighty-nine and two thousand and six though, and not in a good way. There is heightened concern now with the Title One improvement plans where smart goals and metrics measure success and improve positive outcomes for students that are tied to the budget. Creation is to be collaborative guided by D E C requirements, B P S priorities, family, student, staff, faculty and admin input. And technically, the school improvement plan should be reviewed by the S S C and then if approved, goes to the district. And as the year goes on, it gets reassessed. But too many B P S schools ignore the Title One requirements and recommendations. Too many school plans get created, usually only with admin, teacher and staff voices. And too many never even get presented at an S S C for review or vote. So this is a cautionary tale. Effective S S Cs need cultivation, more than just training, which obviously is essential. However, it must be a shared value. Please empower the intended collaborators and ensure the shared model is safeguarded as a commitment to family and student voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers are Michelle Douglas, Carlennis Nunez, Carla Rolon and Kristen Leslie. Please raise your hand. Michelle Douglas is not in the meeting, so Carlennis Nunez? Carlennis Nunez? Please unmute yourself.
Okay, I got it now.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so it's, sorry, it's actually me, um, the host has asked that you start your video, so should I just? That's out of that?
Please start.
Okay. All right. So good evening, everyone. My name is Carlennis Nunez and I'm a resident of Dedham, Massachusetts. I'm here today to speak in support of having the Boston Arts Academy Theater named after Linda Nathan and Carmen Torres. I'm very passionate about this topic, so I'll tell you a little bit more about myself. Uh, as a freshman, I attended High Perk High, the Anics High School during, um, during that time there, I really didn't feel motivated and I didn't feel any support from my teachers. But when I transferred over to Boston Arts Academy as a sophomore to pursue theater, everything really changed. Like I became inspired and I felt like a sense of community there. Even though both schools were in the same building, it was like night and day. It was a totally different environment compared to that at High Park High. Carmen and Linda, their passion, their love for Boston Arts Academy and the arts, um, just reflected. It, it was reflected in every aspect of the school, including the teachers that they selected to be there for us. I felt a sense of love and belonging. Even as I walked through, like, the hallways, uh, I would see Carmen, and she would make it a point to give me a hug and ask, "How am I doing?" And as for Linda, she would always hold us accountable and encourage us to up the school values with a very, with a very loving and caring spirit. Carmen and Linda created a perfect team as principals, which made us feel secure and ensured that we always knew we had a voice. Even as an adult, when I needed support, Linda was there and did not hesitate to be there for me as a family member would. Despite of all these hurdles, I became a registered nurse, and I feel that Boston Arts Academy laid the groundwork for that. I believe it's important that we honor them, and I ask for you to please consider my request, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Kristen Leslie.
Hello, um, my name is Kristen Leslie. I'm a resident of Dorchester and the art teacher for, um, Taylor Elementary. Um, I'm not really here to share, um, any opinion for or against the merger, more to share, um, who my students are, so you have that in your mind as opposed to just them as numbers and statistics. Um, statistically, our students are ESL learners, our students are majority black. Some are Latino, uh, and we have quite a number of students who are in our inclusion and in our strand. Um, students with a lot of needs, our schools, we are the Haitian magnet, so we have a lot of people that we are welcoming, not just into Boston, but into the country, who've had a long journey to get here. So, of course, little people who've had those big changes need a lot. And not just wherever it falls. Really employing the school committee to think about their needs and supporting them, not for their test scores, but for their lives, for who they are. Um, and I also wanted to share some of the things that are important to the students. Um, I asked some of my, I see everybody, so I asked some of my fifth and sixth graders, um, what is most important to them, and also to think of a sense of urgency when we discuss these things, because you're only in fifth grade once, you're only in first grade once. Um, because I did see that all plans, um, do have quite a while where students would be in the bigger classes, but in the same dilapidated facilities. Um, improved facilities is big for kids. They notice. Um, they already feel a little crowded. Better supplies is super important. They want opportunities for accelerated learning for those of them who are, who are, um, meeting and exceeding grade level. They want opportunities for sports, especially soccer and basketball. And just thought, whatever happens, the Taylor staff, we're ready to put our best foot forward. Um, but the kids deserve the best now, and however it shakes out, merger-wise, what they see the day-to-day. Yep.
Thank you very much. Carla Rolon is not in the meeting. So, next speakers are Ruby Reyes, Denisa Dobrin, Samantha Laney, and Andy George. Please raise your hand. Ruby Reyes?
Hello, my name is Ruby Reyes, and I am the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and a Dorchester resident. As you all make decisions tonight about school closures being labeled as mergers, the use of the racial equity planning tool is vital. It was a highlight in the last school committee presentation, most especially by city officials. The tool should be used with fidelity, especially given how important these decisions are and the generational impact they'll have on BPS families. In question five of the, the REPT tool for the Shaw and Taylor School merger, which was completed in April twenty twenty-three, it includes the following questions. How does this proposal effort mitigate disparities, increase racial, and increase racial and other equity? What are possible unintended consequences? What complementary strategies will further advance equity? These questions are some of the most important questions in the tool. This is how central office and city officials responded to these very important series of questions. Quote, "In order to do this effectively, the plan of action includes working with both central office staff, the merger team, and our broader school communities to identify specific programming, strategies, and resources that will result in actualizing the elevated core values. We are currently in the concept design phase of the work, and this is an iterative process. This first stage of the work will inform the proposal to the Boston School Committee to merge Shaw and Taylor School Communities." End quote. This response does not answer the questions or even address racial disparities. We don't think equity is a joke. Clearly, the BPS leadership that completed this form thinks this is a joke because they didn't even bother to answer the questions. Beja supports the Shaw community in asking to vote against this merger and with the Taylor, and we support the Sumner demands for authentic community engagement. We also support the REPT tool being completed with fidelity and actually answering questions. We also support central office staff learning to read the tool and effectively use that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Next speaker is Denisa Dobrin.
Hi, sorry for the difficulties. First time participating in this, uh, this meeting. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Denisa Dob- a Dudley Street neighbor.
I think we're losing you. We can't hear you.
Oh, you can't?
We can, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's not. So, hello, everybody. My name is Denisa Dobrin, uh, and I'm, um, the parent of, um, um, student in Dorchester. My son is a six-year-old, uh, who goes to, uh, K-two at Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter. And, um, he was just evaluated, um, as far as math and reading, uh, goes, uh, the third grade level. Um, and, um, as somebody else mentioned prior to me, and, uh, need to be learning at higher levels. Um, I, the teachers and the principals, um, have explored grades skipping, and initially it seemed like a great idea. However, the school administrations, uh, later expressed concerns that I share about his emotional level. So, we realize that that is not really-
Now, we can't really hear the whole testimony. You want to try to log out and log back in again?
Okay, um-
You want to try to log out and then log back in?
I'll do my best to.
Okay.
I'm trying to do that now, again.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Samantha Laney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Could you please turn on your camera?
Uh, yes. Oops, sorry, I just hit the-
Thank, thank you.
There we go. Sorry, I am using several devices at once because I'm actually teaching a class as we speak. Um, so, good evening. My name is Samantha Laney. I am currently a fifth-grade inclusion teacher at the Holmes Innovation School. I have also been teaching MTEL preparation courses through the Office of Recruitment, Cultivation, and Diversity since summer twenty twenty-one. Um, since then, I have taught three sessions worth of course courses, currently instructing my fourth, currently literally in a class that I just paused. Um, in the last year, I have been paid one time, a singular time, and it was months after the completion of my work for my first session over the summer of twenty twenty-one. Um, and was only after months, uh, almost six months after the spring, people didn't get paid into the fall and after the instructors had to partner with a union to take collective action against the district. Um, since then, I have spent hundreds of hours holding classes, um, throughout fall and winter semesters, and am currently owed thousands of dollars by the district. Um, I have still not been paid for work that I have completed in the fall semester in December, um, nor the work that I've been paid, uh, that I completed in mid-April for the winter semester. It is wildly unacceptable that I and other instructors have to resort to publicly addressing the school committee to be paid for work that we did over five months ago for the second time this year. Um, BPS needs to rectify this issue of payment immediately and take drastic steps to ensure that we instructors are not back here six months from now again demanding our money, because if we are, we may not have any instructors left at that point. Uh, in the midst of a mass teacher shortage, if, and if the district truly takes the recruitment and retention of teachers seriously, they will also take the retention of instructors working to get teachers licensed seriously. So, thank you for hearing my piece, and hopefully the payment issue will be rectified quickly. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andy George.
Hi, sorry about that. Okay, so I had, I'm trying to like mark my, my notes up as well for the time, but, um, okay. So, hi, my name is Anne Shinchiya George. I am an advocate and a parent at BLA. As a district, we are uniquely situated to help all students with this post-COVID world, and when we know they're really struggling. So I want to ask if you think we really understand just how much our kids need us right now, and if we've done, if we've done enough work to prepare our schools to be kind and patient, because it seems the messaging from the district really lacks compassion. I have plenty of examples. It is apparent that we need more tolerance for our students when they are acting out or when they're falling behind or being bullied or are the bully, because bullies are suffering too. What measures have we taken to help the uptick of sadness and anger? I recall Sam DePina promising to roll out an anti-bullying campaign at every school, but I've seen nothing more. Where is it? I suspect we all fear what may come to light with an anti-bullying campaign that's executed in fidelity. What have we put in place? Are we prepared to deal with the kids who were forced to be with their abuser more hours of the day during COVID? They need nurturing and love. They need kindness. They need to know that they are okay. They need to feel safe at school to thrive. We know that hurt people hurt people, and there seems to be a lot of hurt going around. We are seeing so much abuse of power and punishment from the district and our schools toward our students and families. It really has to stop. Suspensions are rampant, reporting fifty-one A's on families, which are a constant threat and a fear tactic meant to hold over unruly families who don't just obey. And the no trespass orders, a handy tool when you want to silence individuals and stop them from connecting to others who may be experiencing issues. In fact, I believe that I myself am at risk because of the high-ranking leader at BPS who doesn't like what I say. I've noticed, whatever, there, there's so much there, but we also have administrative leave for the staff. I'd love to see all the data on these mechanisms, and maybe we'll be able to request that. Um, these cases are short, are nothing short of outrageous and abuses of power and lacking compassion and true leadership for these children and our schools.
Thank you, Ms. George. Next speakers are Frank Soboda, Elizabeth Ferentz, Jess Mana, and Allison Friedman. Please raise your hand virtually on Zoom. Frank Soboda.
Hi, uh, my name is Frank Soboda. I live in Mattapan, teach history and special education at English High School. Like Samantha earlier, I'm an MTEL prep coach. I've been coaching Foundations of Reading since twenty twenty, and I'm speaking tonight because the MTEL coaches have yet to be paid for work that we've been doing for the past nine months. We were promised stipends for fall twenty twenty-two in the April twenty-eighth paycheck, then in the May twelfth paycheck, now the May twenty-eighth paycheck, and as of this week, there is going to be no stipend in our check on May twenty-eighth. Now, I've worn several hats in my years in BPS, but there's no role more special to me than that of MTEL prep coach for two reasons. One, MTEL Prep supports, uh, expanding the diversity of our educators in BPS. Exams like the MTEL are proven to have discrepant outcomes for diverse racial groups, but our participants go from seeing these exams as a complex, overwhelming task to having strategies and knowledge to clear this milestone on their career path. And two, well before science of reading and equitable literacy were on the district's agenda, my high school students were consistently struggling to consume and produce texts. But Coaching Foundation of Reading brings me together with parents, teachers, student support, and admin staff from across the district. K-zero to high school across disciplines. It might look like we're practicing multiple choice questions, but really, we're figuring out why a student in late elementary school is disfluent and how this might impact their comprehension later on. We're talking about effective strategies to teach ELLs and to assess students with disabilities and help them make literacy progress. This is important work. Since twenty twenty, I have logged over five hundred and eighteen hours coaching MTEL. Last fall alone, I logged over forty hours working with eleven MTEL candidates, who's gave me strong feedback. Uh, now I'm coaching seventeen educators. Uh, I mentored two new instructors at Winter twenty twenty, but ultimately, if BPS is not paying me, um, and not showing me that they value my work, um, they're showing me that they don't value these diverse candidates who are trying to demonstrate their commitment to the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Elizabeth Ferentz.
Good evening, school committee and BPS staff. My name is Elizabeth Ferentz. I'm a Rosendale resident, parent to a second grader at Charles Sumner Elementary, and co-chair of the Sumner Family Council. I'm the first of three Sumner community members testifying tonight in advance of your vote on the proposed Fulbrick-Sumner merger. I'm intentionally beginning my testimony with highlights from our Sumner School community, because in the past, our testimony has focused on challenges. Last week, our wonderful dance teacher, Ms. Gilchrist, partnered with folks from Meta Movements for an evening of merengue, bachata, and salsa for students and families. Our Sumner musical, led by music teacher Mr. Houten, featured our fifth and sixth graders singing, introducing the community to their instruments, and playing their band instruments. Feel free to search for the wonderful YouTube video. In contrast to these highlights, we have learned in recent weeks that some of our testimony at school committee meetings and some comments made by Sumner community members at the May first Fulbrick-Sumner merger have been harmful to our Fulbrick community partners and to others. On behalf of our community, I apologize for our biased language and deficit approaches. To begin to address these issues, we are doing the following. Number one, those of us who have been testifying are reviewing our comments for bias and deficit thinking. We're committed to addressing our biases and changing our language. Number two, at our Sumner Family Council and School Site Council meetings last week, we acknowledged our mistakes and the harm we have done. We reviewed asset thinking versus deficit thinking and best practices. Number three, our school leadership is committed to addressing biases and supporting growth in the family community through options such as race dialogues. We welcome BPS support in this process. Number four, we recommit to a robust community equity roundtable process at the Sumner. While none of these four steps are sufficient, we look forward to addressing the harm we've caused and building stronger relationships. We appreciate the support the design team has provided us and look forward to ongoing partnership in this vital work. We ask that future community meetings incorporate teachings about bias and asset versus deficit thinking to develop the skill- the skill of all participants in this process. We look forward to ongoing partnership with the Fulbrick community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jessica Jess Manna.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jess Manna. I'm the parent of a K1 student at Charles Sumner Elementary and a Rosendale resident. I and many others chose the Sumner in part because of its diverse staff and student body. And we are really looking forward to creating a new community that is just as diverse with the Fulbrick. As we have said before, we are not asking for a no vote with the merger, but we want BPS to acknowledge that a merger of any schools causes a disruption to all students and that all merged schools should be given extra resources to ensure the students and families are supported during the transition. A merger with high populations of students that already utilize overextended support staff such as family liaisons, social workers, and reading specialists should be given even more resources. You have heard us ask for the things that we believe will make this merger successful. We want four social workers for at least the first two years after we move into the Irving to ensure our students, staff, and families have the support they need. These social workers should be required to write a roadmap for supporting this community before we transition to the one social worker model. We want at least two full-time and permanent nurses to ensure coverage at all times, including during our extensive before and after-school programming, which is one of the reasons families choose our school. We want a commitment from the district to partner with our new community and create a roadmap for becoming a dual-language school completed by the end of school year 2425. As you know, the Sumner is 60% Spanish-speaking, so this only makes sense. We want at least two full-time permanent family liaisons. One focused on family support, IP compliance, and transportation issues, and the other focused on community engagement, supporting the SFC and supporting their transition to a dual-language school. We want an authentic process of community engagement for choosing our school leader. BPS should be asking both school communities for a full evaluation of their current principal and searching for new candidates to ensure the two communities have the best leadership possible. We're also asking for transparent communication about who the staff will be and how the staff being transitioned out of the Sumner and Fulbrick will be supported.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Allison Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Allison Friedman. I'm a Rosendale resident and a Sumner and BLA mom. The two mergers on the table today are the Guinea pigs for Green New Deal. A lot of lessons have been learned that I hope will be rolled out to other mergers coming. Uh, giving, one lesson is that giving schools a long-term plan and minimizing disruptions goes a long way to ensuring stability. I hope the food. Master plan will have that for all schools. Number two, understanding why a merger is happening, why certain schools were chosen to merge, and how students will benefit is imperative to getting communities to a yes. Detailed data like enrollment and budget data, perhaps analyzing different possible scenarios is necessary. Vague statements that the budget will be better aren't enough. Three, merging communities requires communication. The design team structure with periodic community meetings is labor-intensive, but it has been so, so worth it. I hope you'll roll that out to more schools. Teachers and parents also notice things in building designs that central office staff may not notice. In our case, that included the wrong number of total classrooms, wrong number of kindergarten classrooms, no nurse's office, and later a nurse's office that didn't match the BTU contract. Including multiple stakeholders in building design means you will get better buildings. And since we're spending $4 billion over the next several years, um, we want the best buildings we can get. Um. These are all things that we've gotten us from no to yes, and I think they can be rolled out district-wide. Lastly, school committee, you can vote yes on the Sumner merger merger and vote no on the Taylor-Shaw. It's not clear how the merger will benefit those schools. There is no long-term, there is a long-term plan for their community, but it's so long-term that the current students who are disrupted won't actually get the benefit. The circumstances of the two mergers are really different, so I think you can actually vote differently on the two mergers.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Next speakers are Francesca Brangman, Justin Norton, Barbara Fields, and Riza Camberback. Please raise your hand. Francesca. Brangman.
Is it my turn or no?
Yes, it's your turn.
Okay, hi, my name is Francesca Brangman, also known as Mary Frances Brangman. Um, I work at Madison Park and I'm here to support the new admissions policy. I'm really excited. I hope that you all will be excited and pass it. But what I really wanted to caution was, um, and I'm not sure if this is still a practice, so it's a question and a caution, to stop administratively assigning students to Madison Park Technical Occupational High School. If you walk into Madison Park and you haven't been aware of what you're walking into, you more than likely will walk out the door. You have to work twice as hard and you get twice as much at Madison. And administratively assigning people is super disruptive if they're not aware and they show up and they don't know what they're walking into. So I just wanted to make sure that that is addressed in some kind of way. And thank you so much for all that you do and have a great night. Ciao.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Justin Norton.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, so my name is Justin Norton. I'm a program specialist for the Boston Public Schools MTL Prep Program in the Office of Retention, Cultivation, and Diversity. I'm here to address the issue of unpaid stipends for our MTL instructors. Uh, in January 2023, BTU President Jessica Tang testified in front of this committee on the systemic problem of unpaid stipends in BPS. Days after that testimony, MTL instructors who had been waiting for more than six months for stipends magically received an email from OHC that they were receiving their stipends in the next paycheck. After that meeting, I was hoping that the days when I spent valuable work time asking my supervisors time and time again about MTL stipends and being asked about them time and time again by MTL instructors would be over. I am here to report that sadly I was mistaken. BPS owes MTL instructors unpaid stipends from fall of 2022. We also owe MTL instructors, um, stipends from classes taught between January and April of this year. Since I submitted fall MTL instructor stipends for payment in January, I've done everything I could behind the scenes and leverage every connection I have to get these stipends paid. I have been assured multiple times that instructor stipends would be in the next check. But alas, I'm here to tell you that BPS still has not solved the most basic function of the employer-employee relationship, paying people for their work in a timely manner. The BPS MTL Prep Program cannot exist without our dedicated staff of B2 educators. They're fed up and I don't blame them. I put them, I put up with the stipend trade because as a male educator of color, I am deeply invested in retention programs like MTL Prep. These programs are vital in ensuring that BPS all it can to support educators of color and remaining in the education profession. To put it very charitably, failing to pay instructors who are deeply invested in workforce equity goals the district says it values is a problem. These are the very same instructors who will be calling on and to staff summer 2023 MTL programming, which is very likely to exceed the 389 BPS employees enrolled this summer. I'm pleading with leadership of this district to move as quickly as possible to pay our MTL instructors for their fall/winter stipends. Please do not jeopardize the programs that make BPS a more diverse and inclusive space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Barbara Fields. Ms. Fields, please unmute yourself. Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, now I see. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I at least knew how to do that in terms of technology. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I, oh, let me turn this off. I must say that today has been quite difficult for me in that I have been thinking about this merger all day and I've had several conversations with persons regarding it. And as we've talked about, I've noticed that my blood pressure has gone up. So since I only have two minutes, I just want to get to the core of my feelings about this. And that is, how can we call ourselves an anti-racist school district and continue to perpetuate racist policies and practices that disproportionately impact and harm Black and Brown students and communities? There is no way that one can look at this proposal and not use a word that I really don't like to use and not call it racist. We have a racial equity, um, planning tool that was put in place years ago to help guide us to critique and analyze decisions that this district was making to ensure that it did not disproportionately or targeted our Black students. And it's called racial equity because we were focusing on the issue of race. If you look at, and I think all of you received, the analysis, the racial equity analysis that was done by the uh, Bill BPS, the Green New Deal Coalition, of which I, as a member of Bean, participate. You will, you will certainly know that this proposal does nothing to improve or better the improvement, the education for students at the Shaw School. In fact, if you compare the procedures, the practices that were used to determine that this school would be the only one remaining of the three sets of mergers, one would ask the question, why? The clap was removed and nobody knows why that was removed. I commend the parents of the Sumner, uh, and the Fulbrick because they advocated for what they felt was in the best interest of their children.
Thank you, Ms. Field.
Just about finished. School committee and the city listened and they have a proposal, a plan that works for them. They're gonna have another new renovated building. One speaker just talked about the resources they want and it won't begin until 25. When in fact, their children will not be disrupted, but will go into a new facility and it's a better education. Look at what's happened.
Thank you, Ms. Field. Thank you very much.
I will send it in in writing, but I'll use the terminology, this is a racist policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Riza Camberback. Hello, you can start.
My name is Riza Camberback and I am a K2 inclusion teacher at the Taylor Elementary School. The Taylor has been my home for the past few years and it truly is a learning environment. The education of our students is fundamental and the success and growth of our students is what drives us daily. I want to speak on the potential of this merger and what it will bring to our community. I'm hopeful that the adequate resources will be offered and they will promote continued learning and growth of our students. In addition, I'm also confident that the rigorous work done by both of our staff and our students will be highlighted with this merger. I can't speak for the Shaw, but I'm sure they will provide the same type of work and strive that as the Taylor we do. No one can predict the future, but I would like our future to be filled with our students given the same quality of opportunities as those in suburban neighborhoods. Children can feel their environment literally, so I want them to be able to feel this new merger and see all of its benefits that we may reap. I also want the feelings of the students to be considered and highlighted in this process as it continues. The future starts with the feeling that our students will feel as soon as they walk into the school and I want that to be promoted by the school committee. I also hope that during this whole process, we hear from the school committee and we are able to provide feedback and questions just so that we know that every voice is heard. Thank you all for this time and I would just like to say the Taylor and the Shaw need the same resources that schools in all small suburban, predominantly white neighborhoods receive. And I would definitely hope that that is being brought into consideration as you guys make this merger. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Next speakers are Venkat Chalasani, Shonea Tavares, Shorman Merlin Bebois, Suleka Soto, and Denise Dobrin. Venk, can you please raise your hands? Venkat Chalasani.
Hi, um, Hope PKS can hear me. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I am a resident of Charleston and a proud immigrant. I lived in this city for the last 30 years. And I have two children in the BPS system, one in sixth grade and the other one is in third grade. My sixth grade child has just applied for the exam schools and was rejected. Despite having more than 95 points of a composite score out of 100, he doesn't get any extra points for the school he goes to. And being a, a family where we speak multiple languages at home and because of that, maybe his English score is slightly less. Again, his overall score was 95 without any extra points for the school. And he got a letter from the state, from the DC saying that he had his exceptional student on MCAS. And he is asking me why his friends, one person who lives in his zone six, which is stone's throw, throw away from our house, he got into the, into BLS. And other student who got less score, both of them got less score than he did, and they got into BLS because of the vagaries of the zoning. And he's asking me why he cannot get into his school and when his friends got into the school, when he had, when he worked so hard to get these great scores. We, I ask you guys, what, what should I tell my child? Should I tell him that he's not good enough? For, for the BLS system and where can my child go to school in this town? Every others, uh, every other high school is having a lot of problem with, with, with the schools. So we suggest three points. Number one, allocate them based upon the zone number of attendance who, who are applying. The second thing could be expand the, the public, the exam school so that every student who's eligible can get into the exam school.
Thank you, Mr. Chalasani.
Oh, it's Chalasani. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Shonea Tavares. She's not signed in. Neither is Shorman Merlin Bebois. So next speaker is Suleka Soto.
Good evening. Um, my name is Suleka Soto. I am a Boston Public Schools parent, a Beja organizer, and a Southland resident who has recently. who has recently, just today, been knocking on the doors at the State House to advocate for the Thrive Act. This act would create a system for comprehensive support and improvement that is informed by local community input and evidence-based support. I support the Thrive Act because the evidence has shown that top-down decisions such as receivership or unwanted mergers neglect local input and often disproportionately affect black and brown communities by causing further instability, disruption and harm. Today, to BPS's credit, I mentioned that when implemented correctly and done with fidelity and include an authentic engagement, shared decision-making allows for students, families and educators to have an input in the decisions that directly impact them. Many of us can even do it at the city level through committees such as the Reimagine School Funding, which I am a part of and where I feel like my voice is heard. Voting to merge the Shaw and Taylor School Communities disregards the opinions of those involved and it will cause further inequity, imbalance and disruption. Instead, they should be supported in their voices, sorry, that's my doorbell, and their voices heard and their voices heard in order for the communities to succeed and thrive. Let me just wrap that. However, they're being subjected to these changes because of a failed weighted funding system that many on this committee voted for just a few years ago. While this team will claim combining or reconfiguring schools helps stabilize school budgets and enables schools to invest in resources that makes a difference for students, the funding formula is changing just for that. In order to bring more stability and equity to schools with declining enrollment, when will the racial equity planning tool be used with fidelity and actually advance equity? I just urge this committee to please, um, read thoroughly the, um, the R E P T tools to make sure that it actually brings equity and not further imbalance to the school communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. And our last speaker is Denise Dobrin.
Okay, I'm gonna try this again. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So my name is Denise Dobrin and I'm a BPS parent. Uh, my child goes to Dudley Charter School, neighborhood, Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter uh, in Dorchester. And he's a K-2 that was evaluated at third grade level. And I'm here because, um, I believe that addressing the needs of kids who are at the upper end of the learning spectrum should be similar to the way we address the lower end of the spectrum with a specific individual, individual plan and a proper structure, staffing and quality personalized support. So that they can also tribe, um, and feel included in the BPS environment. And, uh, it is a huge concern because I have heard from numerous other families that are just like me, where their kids are evaluated at higher levels and they end up, uh, finding that the only solution is leaving BPS and homeschooling. And I really cannot afford that, uh, nor do I want to, to be doing that. Uh, I do my share of teaching at school at home. And I think since my kid is doing fairly well in school, I've proven that, uh, I've done well enough. I expect, uh, BPS to actually provide the same level of support. So I'd be speaking to the teachers and the teacher, teachers were the one that initially, um, um, supported the idea and actually presented the idea to me that he would go to, from K-2 to a second, uh, grade. However, um, as far as emotional level, he would not, I'm sorry, he would not, oh, gotcha. He would not be able to, uh, to, to do well in second grade. And even if you went to second grade, um, skipping a grade would not, still not intellectually challenge, challenge him enough. The teachers are trying their best to address his needs, but having 20 other kids around that they, that beat for their attention, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't really help him. So, there needs to be a better way to address, uh, this kind of situations and also look at the kids that are the upper end of the spectrum. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Um, Ms. Chair, we have no more speakers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pravik. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your testimony. Your perspective is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $50,617,529. I will now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments on the grant. Dr. Alkens.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Um, one of the questions, I'm just trying to pull it up here, um, was actually related to, I believe it's the which grant are we looking at? Gets the, sorry, like scrolling through, um, the Title II A Improving Educator Quality Grant, um, specifically, um, I'm interested in how the team arrived at the percentages of teachers, particularly for goal number four, which is the diversity initiative. Everybody, I think, knows that it's important that we're, that we're diversifying our teacher workforce through any means necessary. Um, I'm just curious as to how they arrived at these, these percentages and goals for, for, for this particular initiative.
Great, Dr. Alkens. Um, I think we could, I think Chief Cooter and also Chief Grandson for that particular grant. Excuse me.
Yeah, in terms of the particulars for the grants on the, um, the teacher goals, I would defer to either Chief Grandson or to the Office of Human Capital in terms of the target setting. I know we work with them to identify what are appropriate targets, um, given our past performance and then other objectives for the district. Um, I, I'd have to get back to you in terms of how that specific target was set.
No, this is, this is, I mean, this is fine. I'm, I'm like, cause I guess I don't have any data from before to sort of know like what are the percentages or the, the actual demographic breakdown of it for me to understand like why 25% for example, uh, that will, uh, new teachers that will identify as black, for, for example, is the metric that we're going for? And if that's a, you know, given, is that a realistic metric? Um, and so I'm just trying to understand like how you all arrived at that, but no, that, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, I would just add to that. I think Chief Cooter covered it. Um, we also have been using 25% as our North Star, given, uh, the, um, Garrity Court Order. And given that it's been in past prior years, um, um, accomplished the 25%. And we've been teetering sort of around, uh, that number. And so when we look at our efforts, including expanding our accelerated community teacher programs, our teacher cadet programs, um, Intel Prep, uh, ParaPro exams, when we look at sort of all of the pathway programs we have and the numbers we've increased over the years, that's how we've gotten to sort of like being confident that we can reach the 25%. Um, but we're happy to provide you that in more, in more detail.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Cardette Hernandez?
And I apologize, I'm also scrolling and I appreciate, uh, Dr. Alkens going first while I scrolled, um, cause he scrolls faster than I do. I have a question about, it's the mental health services grant. Come, hold on one second. Oh, boy. In it, there's a goal around. So this, if I'm reading this correctly, is a, is additional funds to an existing grant that where the goal is to recruit 15 school psychology trainees, 15 social work trainees, 10 school counseling trainees. I guess I'm curious if there's an update here. We had already previously voted on this grant, as I understand it. And now, um, we're trying to add additional money. I think I'm just a little bit confused on sort of what we're looking at.
So this, this falls under our school psych. Um, and so I don't know if Andrea is on. Andrea?
Yeah, she's on.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. This is a new grant and separate from the grant that you voted on at the last hearing. Um, this grant, it comes from the Department of Ed and it allows us to expand, um, our workforce development pathways for social workers, school psychologists and school counselors. So it has, um, several areas that allow us to recruit, um, retain and support, uh, new folks into the mental health field with an emphasis on attracting and supporting people of color into mental health positions.
And those are folks existing in the system or external?
So each year we get a new group of university students. Um, and so these will be new students who will have access to stipends and their supervisors, both the students and the folks who supervise them will have support provided through this grant.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. If there's any discussion or objection to the motion. Hearing none, Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkens?
Yes.
Mr. Cardette Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item is the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for the school year 2324. You'll recall that Chief of Family Advancement Denise Snyder presented the recommendation to the committee at our May 10th meeting. That same day that the community, that's, excuse me, that the committee held a public hearing on the Massachusetts School Choice Program. I will now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
Well, thank you, Chair. Uh, similar to at the last meeting, I would ask, um, that you vote in favor of opting out of the Massachusetts School Choice Program. I think as you heard, um, Chief Snyder address, uh, pretty thoroughly, uh, at the last meeting. Um, there's many reasons why for us the choice program doesn't work. Um, they range from, you know, cost implications, uh, to the fact that our neighboring communities don't participate, um, as a block. And so just our students being able to reciprocally take advantage, um, you know, of the choice program wouldn't be available. Um, it's also around our assignment and the timing of how we receive students, especially late into July and August, uh, and even through October as our, um, enrollment builds. Um, it's just not in the same cycle. Uh, and we also, um, you know, we have particular schools and programs for which we don't have enough capacity now for residents. Um, so for many of the reasons that Chief Snyder gave, and these, um, I would just ask for a yes vote this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Mr. Tran?
Uh, just for some basic information. For the last few years since the, uh, since this, um, program is in place, um, how many, uh, special needs students and, um, ESL students from other, um, uh, you know, cities and towns that have applied and, uh, rejected? Just, you know, some, some overall numbers.
Or, so, uh, uh, through your chair, so, uh, we don't, because we don't participate, the students that would come to us relative to special education would be very specific to a reciprocal, um, spit around the school. Like so, for instance, the Horace Mann School of the DAH, um, has a process, uh, by which that is a more regional. And so we will get students from other districts that apply to come into that, um, as a special education, uh, program. Um, but on the whole, because we don't participate in school choice, um, we don't, we don't have applicants. We do for other things like, uh, you know, vocational and CTE. Uh, we will have our students, um, applying to outside of the district. Um, and there's particular regulations for that. But relative to school choice itself, this would only apply if we were, if we were part of the school choice program.
We are not.
Chief Snyder, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that.
Yep, you, words out of my mouth. We, we have not, we have consistently declined participation, um, exactly for those reasons. They require that you open seats or you open, you allow non-residents eat as of July 1st, if we have open seats. And we fill those seats right through October. I think that's important. And we, we keep those children until they age out. They are then able to apply for other schools once they're in the district. It's, it's just a, a cycle. So, um, Superintendent Skipper, I think you made those points, but wanted to reiterate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardette Hernandez?
This one was tough for me last year. It's tough for me this year. I guess on two, for a few reasons. The first is I'm not seeing, I'm not fully understanding the logic. If surrounding communities are not participating, it means we wouldn't see an influx of students leave our system. But there is a possibility where we would see students enter our system. And I'm imagining parents who work in Boston but live outside the city having more access and opportunities for their kids. And I guess I'm curious why that doesn't sort of interest us more. And then at the same time, even through October, November and December to today, we have open seats across our system. We're under enrolled. That's why we're having merger conversations today as well. So I'm, I don't fully understand, sort of, I'm not fully seeing the logic. My son just also walked in, so he's saying hello to me.
I, I can, um, answer that. The reality is we don't get to choose which school we accept students in. So if there happens to be an open seat at the Elliott at third grade in July, we have to give it to a non-resident, no matter who comes in after them in the city. If there's a second grade seat at the Quincy, if there's a ninth grade seat, um, at New Mission, I mean, it just goes on and on. Pick any school that, um, has high demand. At some point, there's an open seat that we end up backfilling at September, October, November, January, February, April. We wouldn't, if we filled it with a non-resident, we wouldn't be able, we, we would have capacity issues. So if we could restrict it to only schools that we selected, I think that what you're suggesting has a lot of merit. The problem is, is that we don't get to control which schools.
Yeah. I, I would also, I, I mean, I would all, I, I think it is one of those things that on the surface, um, it's intriguing. Um, but when you start to kind of drill down at some of the unintended consequences in a system like ours, um, it would certainly put our residents, um, and give them kind of a backseat, particularly student populations that tend to come in more vulnerably at different times, like late. Um, you know, it also, uh, there's, it's, it's a student is a student. So it could also, we could also have, um, situations where we have special education students coming in and there's a higher cost of education, um, which in, in essence would take away from resources for our residents, for our resident students. Um, so it's one of those ones, um, that I think because of that, particularly in cities, it's a lot of the towns that you see participate in this. But I think for the cities, um, that's why you've seen sort of a pulling back and a not participating. But I think for the cities, um, that's why you've seen sort of a pulling back and not participating, um, you know, in that way.
I hear it, and the only thing I'll, I guess I'm curious on two things. Aren't we funded for the student who comes from their district?
Right, but if that student now becomes our our student, and then uh that student has needs that then, you know, get identified or developed, that student is now ours. So if that's the student needs program seats in a different school, that student becomes part of BPS with that seat.
But with the funding, with the funding from their sending district?
With the funding from the sending district, but you're, there there's uh, you have, there's there's some negotiation there that takes place. Um, it's the same for when we um have, when we take in students from out of district um into a seat for us, and then there's additional services that are needed, there's negotiation um between the two entities. Um, I think the other thing is our exam school process makes it extra complex. Because if you had students coming in in the lower grades, as they reach the grades for exams schools, they become part of that process. Um, so again, for a situation where we're, we already don't have enough seats, um, we would now have in essence, non-residents vying for those seats.
I I hear that. I have two more thoughts. The second is it goes back to the continuous, the continued conversation we have, which is like, if we know there's demand somewhere, and how lucky are we? We don't live in a city that is, that is, that doesn't have space. Then we just have to like meet the demand. And we have data far enough back to actually probably project like what are fourth graders doing today, which will probably give us some intel into how many seats we'll need in exam schools in the future. The second piece here that I think I'm just struggling with is it is about a recognition that we don't think every seat is equal in the system. And I think as a school committee member, we have to grapple with that. Like, the fact that we think we're taking away a high-quality seat from someone else in a vacant school in July is a deep recognition that like, we don't think there are high-quality seats elsewhere. There are winners and losers in the system. And I think, I don't know, there's a part of me that's like, we should be doing this and putting all of our energy into creating high-quality seats everywhere and not the sort of the dance that I find us always doing, which is like why we have to limit innovation as a result of historical poor performance. I don't know. I think like there are ways to draw also people back into the city. Like, if you do this and a family's working outside of the city and their kid is going to school in the city, maybe in two years they're like, actually, I want to come back to the city. I want to live here. I don't want to live in insert wherever I'm living. But I feel like we're building this wall and a little bit of it, for me, every time I've heard us talk about this, is a little bit of fear around kids who are complex. Whether that's kids with special needs, or kids who are not native English speakers, or kids who are high-performing. Like, we're not actually ever talking about the middle. We're talking about like kids who are gonna like s- steal seats from other high performers because we're not willing to build capacity at those schools, or kids who are too complex, their needs are too complex. This is the second time we've talked about it, and we've talked about kids with disabilities as like too difficult to serve in our system. And I, it just never lands right with me. And I, you know, that's my piece. I just think we're not thinking. We're just saying no because it's too hard.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So I I would just, I think your, to your first point, I think that's a great piece of conversation to be had at the June seventh. You know, when we talk about exam seats and potential thinking and solutions to some of the situations we find right now. So I think that's going to be a a good, rich conversation for the committee to have on the seventh. And I think, you know, we're eager to kind of hear um what committee members think. Um, I think to the second point, um, I don't even think it's about a quality seat. I think it's about, it's just parental choice. It's what parents are, you know, where parents choose, and they choose for a variety of reasons, as we know. Sometimes it's proximity, sometimes it's a particular program that exists in that school. Um, so it isn't about the fact that we have particular seats that we value as quality. I think it's just about what we see as demand from parents for a variety of reasons. Um, so there's no judgment in one seat versus another. It's just that we we know that there are some areas of the city and some schools for which we don't have enough seats for what gets requested. Um, so just to clarify that one.
Thank you. And I I I hear you, and you know, we'll always have moments where we agree and where we disagree. And for the last two years, I have disagreed on this as a pro-enrollment strategy and a pro-Boston strategy, one that brings people back to our city, particularly given the fact that nobody else around us is doing it. So we are not sending kids out. We are only welcoming people in.
Are there any other questions or comments? Superintendent, I think we had this conversation a little bit earlier, but I thought it would be important that we do some investigation with regard, you know, around the Commonwealth. You know, who is actually opting into this program and what are the impacts both on the centers and the receivers, so that we have some actual context to think about um how this might work, or, you know, what are the the kinds of placement that people are actually looking for?
Yes, happy to do that, Chair. Happy to do that. I think too, um, remember Cadet Hernandez's point, you know, we don't, we shouldn't just discard innovation as a potential. We just, it's it's our obligation to look at it from all sides, including what unintended consequences can happen from it. So we're happy to to take a look at that and take that on. We actually have a a policy fellow that this would be perfect for.
Great. So when we come back to this conversation next year, we might have a different thought process about it. Um, Mr. O'Neill and then Dr. Alkins.
Um, I I just want to echo that thought of, you know, let's think differently. It never hurts to think differently. And uh I like what you just said, Superintendent, about that you may have a fellow who could look at that and do a deep dive on this for us. Um, because I would like to explore, you know, understand better what are the unintended consequences. I am hesitant to um open it up to other districts for exactly the concern cited about, you know, knowing, we can all name a dozen schools in our head that um residents of other cities would want to get to, and we already hear from parents, as we heard from parents tonight, that we don't have enough seats. Um, that doesn't mean we shouldn't think differently and think innovatively. So I would love to, I want to echo the thoughts of having a deep dive on this and and having a presentation share back to us um as a committee. You know, maybe sometime over the summer or in the fall, after a fellow has had a chance to do a deep dive on this and see uh what what it is that we're missing, but I would be hesitant to support um opening up right now without that deep dive. But I appreciate the push for innovative thinking on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, uh, I I hear everything that's being said. But we have to have some sense of where folks already want to go, right? That, I mean, I I understand the the need for the deep dive. But, I mean, is there already a sense of where families are are would clamor to go? Um, particularly because, yeah, I think the reality of it is, is that families know that they, or they think that certain school environments are better than others. Um, a- a- and I think, I mean, I guess my question is, do we have some sense of this already? That would give us some sense of like where there would be a logjam or where there would something.
Yeah. So I mean, I think, again, I think parental choice is complex, right? We we know certain things about why parents pick certain places. Um, but we don't necessarily have that data of somebody that lives outside of the city. Like, they might pick the school that's near where they work, to remember Cadet Hernandez's point. Um, or they might, you know, if there's a a school that has a particular career theme, they might want their student to go there. Or uh if they want access to a vocational school like Madison. So I don't think we have that data. I do think that the policy fellow, I do think that this is a good um, a good deep dive, right? To sort of see in some of these other communities, um, how it's been approached and what that, what that looks like. For our internal data, um, I'm sure that Denise in the enrollment office um can can give some sense choices and which schools have the highest um of the first choice. Um, and that's something that we can um certainly supply to school committee.
Yeah, Superintendent, I know, I'm not sure if this has been in recent years, but I know in past years there had been some issues around people not utilizing um or using a Boston address when they did not have a Boston address to access some of our schools, particularly our exam schools. And I don't know how many people have tried to do that over the years, but would wonder again if there were a different process, whether those might be some of the families that would um opt to have an opportunity to, you know, enroll in a Boston public school. I don't know what that number has been, you know, let's have been a handful or more. But I know that that has been the case in some instances.
That's right. That's right, Chair. I think some, I think for some, there's lots of reasons I think why that does happen. I think sometimes uh, you know, families move and they have an attachment to a school and school community, especially their child does. And it's very hard to think about going somewhere else, um, especially depending on age of student. Um, you know, sometimes the family moves and the student votes with their feet that they would like to stay, and so that's where you get into that. Um, or sometimes it's to access a school, a particular school that they don't feel is in their district, and it resides back here in Boston. So I think we find lots of different reasons for that. Um, but you know, we do, we do uh try to work to uh make sure that the students who have access right now, that we follow this policy, and those that have access to our schools do reside, um, and the student does sleep in in the, you know, in at that address in the city.
Are we, are there any final comments? Okay, just to be clear, a yes vote means that the district hereby agrees not to participate in the school choice program. So I will now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to withdraw the Boston Public Schools from the Massachusetts School Choice Program for school year twenty-three, twenty-four as presented. Is there a motion?
Oh, moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Oh, sorry. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Alkins?
Abstained.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
No, I don't vote in favor of it. Is I my, am I voting correctly? I wasn't, I was in my head. Yes, is?
Yes, is to withdraw.
Yes is to withdraw, no is to approve the recommendation?
No, no. The recommendation is to withdraw.
Oh, so then no. Apologies.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
I must admit that I have have not um I have not done uh due diligence regarding this uh issue. But I do find a member, Cadet Hernandez's remark and concern quite persuasive. So with the recommendation that uh we should um do a deep dive, uh at least this year, I want to vote no.
Mr. O'Neill?
Um, Madam Chair, a point of order.
Yes.
I am confused by Mr. Tran's comment as far as how he phrased it. Could you please reiterate what a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
Okay. A yes vote means that the district hereby agrees not to participate in the school choice program for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, as I
And a no vote, Madam Chair, means that we would be in favor of participating in the school choice program for the first time?
Right. No means we would participate. Yes means we will not. The other discussion would be that we would be doing a deep dive over this next year in order to come to next year's vote, which may or may not be a yes or no vote. But for right now, because we have not done the deep dive, we are moving, we were, we are voting on the superintendent's current recommendation that we do not participate.
Well, I I let 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 me uh uh re-remark my 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 concern here. I understand the yes and no process uh in relation to this vote. But I've I've received, I don't know, uh a a myriad of calls from different people, uh different parents, uh especially Asian parents from communities around Boston um regarding their desire, but uh their desire to send their children to to Boston, but were were pretty much precluded because of this uh Boston City um residency thing. And I find that a lot of these students are in effect uh denied the equal, in my, in my own uh assessment, equal opportunity in education. Uh, so, I don't know, um. I don't know whether we should implement the uh this, you know, the school uh thi- this policy this year, or we should do a deep dive and 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 re and take another look at at the policy again. But for the sake of 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 clarity, I do vote no. In another word, I would like to see this process, if possible, be implemented this year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tran, no. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
So the motion passes with three yays, two noes, and one abstain.
Thank you. Um, and it and clearly by the virtue of this vote, it's clear that we need to have the deep dive conversation um and to look at the implications of how this particular policy would impact us moving forward. Thank you all. Our next action items are the merger of the Pauline H. R. Elementary School and Charles H. Taylor Elementary School, and the merger of the John D. Philbrick Elementary School and the Charles Sumner Elementary School. You will recall that the superintendent presented these recommendations to the committee on April twenty-sixth. I will now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, tonight I ask for you to vote in favor of merging the Shaw and Taylor and the Philbrick and the Sumner schools into two new communities. Um, combining and reconfiguring schools is frankly an essential strategy to address some of the district's longstanding challenges and um to take advantage of some of our greatest opportunities of what lies ahead. Um, I know these challenges have been front, you know, in front of mind for the members of this committee. Um, particularly as we worked through the budget process this year. Um, we have eight thousand fewer students than we did ten years ago, and they're spread out right now across too many buildings. Um, this leads to classrooms that are partially full, um, sometimes half-full. And um it also perpetuates just a persistent teacher vacancy that's hard to fill by stretching our staff. Um, over the last few years, for the Shaw, Taylor, Philbrick, and Sumner, and in other schools across BPS, um, you know, we fill these gaps through soft landings um and the soft landings policy, um, which is just not going to be sustainable moving forward. Um, when you multiply that across the district, um, you know, it makes it difficult to to really focus our resources on students you know, it makes it difficult to, to really focus our resources on students on the things that we know actually improve outcomes for young people and improving the learning experience. While tonight's vote is about these four specific school communities, this is also about the larger system and building a district that really is laser focused on the well-being of our students. The Shaw, Taylor, Philbrick, and Sumner communities are paying, really paving the way for, you know, other communities that will come behind them. And I'm, I'm really grateful to each of these four communities and schools for holding us accountable, for building a process that, you know, centers and kind of demands that, that, that students and families are at the center and improves the, the school experience. Any merger or school reconfiguration is, is going to be disruptive. I've been through three or four of them in my leadership career. But you know, as I said at, at our meeting when we made these proposals, sometimes disruptions can be a powerful force for good, particularly for students. I'm confident that these proposals will improve the teaching and learning experience. It will, they will certainly preserve the assets for each of the schools and they will build ultimately a school community that's even greater than the sum of its parts. When these communities come together, I, I really believe that the students will be left better off. Both schools will have budgets that are stable, you know, and they'll, they'll be sustainable moving forward and they'll have additional resources in, to be able to invest in new and expanded programming. For the Shaw and Taylor specifically, we've committed that any budget savings from the consolidation of classrooms that that will be reinvested in the community. For the Shaw and Taylor buildings, we'll also have some of the physical space that will be freed up and, and the communities can use these for small group instruction, for one-to-one, for outside programming. But they're all spaces that they don't currently have or have access to. The Philbrick and the Sumner will be moving into, you know, a new facility when renovations to the Irving Building are complete. And the Shaw and Taylor will get a new building too, you know, though it's, it's a little bit further down. You know, as, as we've begun the MSBA process, you know, we're confident that the application is strong. And, you know, the, the city's also proposed, and I'm, I'm grateful for this, that they've included an initial fifty million dollar investment in, in its own capital budget for that, for the Shaw and Taylor build. And so that means we'll be able to move this construction project forward, even if we don't ultimately get invited into the MSBA program. Both of these communities will have a stronger foundation that we can continue to build on, particularly, you know, as we roll out some of the, the initiatives that we believe will be essential and meaningful for student outcome such as inclusion and as we plan for inclusive instructional practice in every classroom. I want to genuinely thank the school leaders, the school staff and the families from, from all four schools and school communities for their continued collaboration as we've worked through what, you know, what has been difficult and difficult decisions to, to bring their community together. And as we continue to develop our long-term facilities plan and focus on universal standards and expectations for instruction and a continuum of services for all students at every school, more work will be done to understand our current landscape to inform additional proposals in the future for the committee. If we want to build the district, you know, our students deserve, then, you know, we, we have to take the steps today and we, we have to understand more works needed for our district to reach the potential we keep talking about. And, and especially to provide every student with the buildings, the learning opportunities and the experiences that, that they deserve. Before I turn it back to you, Madam Chair, I would like to ask the Chief of Capital Planning, Dell Stanislaw, if there's anything that she would like to add. I know that there's been some questions about the use of the racial equity planning tool, the RAP. So I also want to invite somebody that's been a wonderful partner to us, Rebecca Granger, who's the Senior Advisor for Mayor Wu on Youth and Schools, and really just has been an incredible partner in the work as, as well as Charles Branson, who's the Chief of Equity and Strategy for our district and whose team, you know, leads this work to speak about the tools. So I will turn it over to Dell to begin.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. In addition to coming to you tonight as the Chief of Capital Planning, I come to you tonight as a BPS alumni and as a parent. I know what, I know what it's like to advocate for your child. And I know that the system for too long hasn't served all of our students to their full potential. I can't change the past and we, and we can't do this work overnight. But what we can do is change the future. And that's what we have the opportunity to do right now, right here tonight, with a yes vote on the proposed mergers. This is hard. But let me share with you why I think this is one of the most important things we can do to advance equity and close the achievement gap. Number one, we have too many empty seats, resources are being wasted. Bringing students together helps us consolidate resources, creating sustainable budgets with greater flexibility. Number two, we believe in serving students at every school. This is not possible in our small, single-strand schools. If we want students with disabilities to be included, we must have two or four strand schools. Number three, utilizing two campuses frees up other spaces and allows it to transform, allows us to transform spaces into gyms or libraries, libraries, art spaces to spaces to many schools that many of our single-strand and smaller schools do not have. And finally, we have a staffing shortage. There are not enough teachers for all the classrooms that we currently have. Merging schools addresses each of these issues. Merging schools means we have more resources, more space, and more opportunities for students. When our students have more, when our students have a concentration of resources rather than spread too thin across the district, students do better. This is what we want for our children. It's what I want for my own child. Merging these four schools will not solve all of our problems, but we must take this step so we can take the next step and the next step after that. I ask for a yes vote on both of these merger proposals tonight because our students need to start build, our student need to, us to start building the district they deserve. And if we don't take this step tonight, I would argue the most important step in this process, then I think we'll, we will continue to fail our students. We need to start somewhere and I think this is the start we need for a brighter future for our students. Thank you. With that, I would like to pass it over to Dr. Charles Branson, our Chief of Equity and Strategy for the district.
Thank you, Chief Stanislaw, and good evening Superintendent Committee and larger BPS community. Just wanted to start by going back to earlier this evening, the superintendent shared information about the work of the Racial Equity Planning Impact Committee. And this at, at its core is a, a, a change management strategy to shift adult behavior so that every major decision our district makes has equity at the center and that there is a, that, that there is clear documentation on our thinking about how we will operationalize equity. What we've come to learn over the last few years and especially during the pandemic, as we've ele, further elevated and advanced the work of the racial equity planning tool, is that process plus transparency and accountability plus carriage equals equity. And in our system-wide racial equity and leadership training, we shared that the RPT is both product and process. And I've been working directly with Chief Stanislaw and the Green New Deal team in many, many meetings. And there is a commitment to using the RPT as the process for these mergers. And as the team is new and learning the processes and protocols as it relates to the RPT, we are also providing training and coaching support to the team, to the design teams as well. And there's a commitment to publish the results of the equity analysis in the coming weeks. We will be adding to the mergers, the mergers to our next round of RPTs to receive feedback from the REPC committee. That was mentioned earlier. And at that time, we commit to making sure that that's made public as a part of the RPT dashboard that we so anxiously wait to be launched. So just want to acknowledge the voices of advocates and educators and families who spoke during public comment to continue to hold us accountable, as the superintendent said earlier, to sharing our racial equity planning in the coming weeks. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Rebecca Granger.
And thank you all for having me and BPS for continuing to invite me into your team. I just wanted to give a little bit of the experience because I joined both design teams earlier this year because this process is extremely important to the direction we're moving as a district and a city. This is not just the endeavor of Boston Public Schools. This journey is really going to take joint ownership and partnership. So one of the first meetings with the design teams was receiving training on the racial equity planning tool as a grounding foundation. The Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps Team have supported both design teams and have guided the work throughout. Prior to partnering in this work, I had read the rep, but this process has really allowed me to more deeply learn the true impact of what has been designed. Though rep is often referred to as an ending point, and it can powerfully serve in that manner, but it also serves as a living document that guides through lens of equity and moves to documenting that equity work. So there's a clause at the top of the Equity Impact Statement, and that was one of the documents that was shared in the April twenty-sixth School Committee documents. I'm just going to quote quickly, "The content and language in the rep will grow and evolve with the work and understanding of the team." Equity work is complex. Our vision is using the rep as a mediating tool to situate and advance equity. It's the end of the quote. So the tool has guided our work so far with the data pieces we began with, the centering of core values and an engagement. And if the two merger proposals before the school committee tonight are approved, it will continue to guide and push this work because we're still moving towards the design of the joint school communities. And so it will guide and be interwoven within the journey to a joint school community, which is also one of the merger proposal documents. When we continually examine systems of inequity as a routine practice, we better serve our kids. Equity work and an equity lens is facilitated through the rep and the rep is a foundation. But I also want to elevate being proponents for equity has been foundational in the members of the design team as well. Week after week, parents, teachers, and staff advocate and push for their communities to be better served. And week after week, the school superintendents and principals partner to best bring their school communities together. The merger proposal has evolved because of these tireless advocates, which are people who are in the schools that we're talking about every day. Sorry, just heard the slowdown. And this is shown by resources staying in the schools, facilities improvements, and set dates for community meetings moving forward that will be published for the year. And they've also pushed on how we engage as a collective. Just last week, in the Philbrick-Sumner Design Team Meeting, School Superintendent Elena Luna, supported by ESOG, led us in digging into deficit language and the importance of shifting the way we speak about our black and brown children, in part facilitated by what came up in community meetings and in testimony here at the school committee. Members of the design team then took that learning back to other school leadership groups and we heard the effect of such learning during testimony tonight. This process is about equity, having multiple classrooms at each grade level so inclusion can happen, expanding early education, multilingual learning, expanded learning experiences, and moving to new and renovated buildings. Each of these communities will be shifted in this process. But I believe if we are thoughtful and the people guiding this process are, each community will grow for the better. So I look forward to continuing the partnership with BPS through this process. Mary, I'll pass it back to you.
Great, thanks Rebecca. So I'm just, Dell, is there any, anything else that you would like to add before I hand it back to Chair?
Uh, nope, that's it. I think that I'm, I'm good. Thanks, Superintendent Skipper.
Okay, Chair. We'll throw it back to you.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments. Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to just take the, thank the team for all of the tireless work on this. I know it's not an easy process. Change never is. And so just appreciate the centering of doing good work and equity-focused work with and for our community. I do have a couple of questions. My first one is around the plan for leadership at the schools that are being proposed for merger. I'm curious on the both merger proposals, but I'm particularly curious on what it would look like when we're talking about a multiple campus school community.
So I think the best way to answer that is to Dell and Rebecca, the conversations that are being had at the design team. Because I think this is where we would like to get feedback, you know, from the community itself in making some decisions. So I think, I think you heard some of the Sumner parents talk about it one way. I don't think anyone actually from Shaw Taylor mentioned it. But each merger is going to be unique and we have to look at it. You know, I think if it's multi-building sites, we can assume there'll be multiple leaders. But you know, what that process looks like, whether there's, you know, we, we, you know, as in the Sumner's case, you know, there may be a desire to kind of open it up and, you know, take a look at leadership in general or, you know, be able to use and support the leaders that are in the schools through the transition. I think some of these are going to be the things that through the design teams, it'll be discussed. So I don't know Rebecca and Dell, if, if this has been brought up and if so, at what, to what point?
So we would continue to have, well, if the, the merger, if the committee was to vote in favor of the merger, this is also, this would also be conversations at the table as we think about programming and all of that good stuff with the, in collaboration with the design team. Sort of like what, what a process would look like, superintendent would come up, come up in that space. And that's a part of the next steps.
So I, I appreciate the emphasis on wanting to ensure that we're gathering community input. I personally think it would also be really helpful to create, like, what are those guardrails? District leadership should have a vision or an idea of what we want that to look like because we have a lot of different communities that will likely go through some sort of process. And so I think it would be really helpful for us to figure out what that footprint looks like, what that model really looks like. Because we can continue to ask community what they want. But then if we're going to go back and say, but we're going to do it this way, right, I think that that erodes some of the trust that we know we're trying to build. But I also think it's just helpful for us to understand what is the, what is the district's vision around creating some of these models. And so I just want to say that I think it would be really important for us to have a real, clear understanding on what we're working towards, not just in terms of the facilities pieces coming from the facilities person, right? But really understanding how we're going to create stability with leadership for our school communities. I do have a couple other questions if I have another minute left, so I'm going to jump on that. Um, I do have a couple other questions if I have another minute left, so I'm gonna jump on that. Uh, I heard there be men- I heard that there was mentioned that given. The work that we want to do to ensure that we're putting more resources into classrooms for students and families. Um, and also to move towards a more inclusive um environment. That we recognize that single strand schools make that really difficult or impossible. And so my question as a parent is, should families anticipate that single strand schools will be phased out?
So I, I think that we are, we're looking hard at the single strands because for the reasons that we gave at the last presentation. Um, we, we are looking to gravitate toward two strand or four strand um as a way to. In the easiest format, create inclusive opportunities. Um, so I think, you know, each school we will be looking at, right? As we get the, the con- uh, the facilities conditions report back, and those that are single strand tend to have. Um, it's not just the issue of inclusion, it's also that many times like in that single strand. Um, from a, you know, those are schools that have large soft landings. There are also schools that because they, they, of the size of the building, um, they are single strand, they don't have the spaces. Um, for the educational program we're talking about. So those will be, uh, any single strand schools are the ones that we'd be looking at, but again. Um, in the, in the case of what you see sort of here, you have one where it's going to be a multi-grade configuration. Versus another where it's a combination in a building. So it doesn't mean that um. The school itself automatically goes away because it's a single strand. It's just a question of. Um, you know, what it looks like in a merger or what it looks like in a new school or a new entity. Um, so I think the physi- you know, the facilities condition is going to give us one aspect of it, but yes, I think the single strand. From an inclusivity standpoint is harder to uh to accomplish, which is why we really are looking to the two strand and the four strand.
Got it. I think that that's really helpful, and actually this is, I'm gonna jump in and do my last question. Um, you talked about how we're looking at mul- um. In, in one scenario, it's, it's a school building, another one, it's different grade configurations, right? Like we're combining um uh different offerings in terms of grades. And so. I'm trying to understand when we're looking at the proposal for the Shaw and the Taylor around the two campus model. How does the district distinguish from a two campus model versus different schools with guaranteed pathways?
Yeah. So Dell, I, I'll have you just speak, um, you know, to how we've approached it on, on the particular one that's on the table. Um, I think the pathway one is one from a region standpoint we're also looking at. Um, so there may be situations where particularly to get the high schools more involved in the feeder piece. Um, that we can look at regional situations. Um, you know, so I think that there's gonna be, there's gonna be a combination of things we're looking at. Once we're, once we're looking at the facility, the conditions um report. Um, but also in addition to what's available in that area of the city. Um, one of the things we know with families is they're kind of clearly saying to us, we would like solutions close to where we live. And the range of availability to that really differs to where you are within the city. Um, we would add to that quality choice in that, right? Like, we want to make sure that all of our offerings are about quality. So Dell, do you want to just talk a little bit about um as um you and the team are sort of looking at um the various uh. Uh, schools and mergers that are being considered, um, how you, how you kind of look at it, the difference between the feeder versus um a two-school solution?
Uh, thank you, Superintendent. Um, so the design study is about specs for pre-K uh through six and a seven, seven through twelve um schools. De- defining what must be true about all schools, uh, um, when thinking about like the merger, right? The Shaw School um does not, does not have space for a K through six pathway. So the, so think, when thinking about combining the Shaw um with the Taylor School. It creates that six through, K six through um, the K six pathway. That the district is like moving towards the K six and seven, twelve pathway. So mergers, the mer- this merger will create. Um, the peak, the pre-K through six pathway for the Shaw. Um, and Taylor schools.
I have another question, but I'll wait for others to ask.
Okay.
Mr. Trang.
I believe a member, Stephen A. Alkins.
It's, it's, it's okay. I'm going by how you all are showing up on my screen. So anyway, but everybody has their hand raised, so I'll be getting. To everyone, so you can go ahead and then I'll do um Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cardad Hernandez and um Mr. O'Neal. And then we'll go around again, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, uh, I. The kind of, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make my remark now, but you know, it, it's not much of a question, but it, it's kind of. A response to some of the community concerns um regarding. Uh. Equity as well as. Uh, some had raised certain kind of discrimination issue. Well, let me, um, first of all, thank you for, for uh putting forward this um project. And this uh policy. Uh, I'm gonna preface my, my remark right now by saying that I'm, I'm with it. And I'm gonna vote for it. Um, here's the reason why I like to respond to some of the. Remarks raised in relation to uh. Equity and discrimination. I, I'm a lawyer and I've spent a, a good chunk of my life in the legal profession. Over thirty years specializing in discrimination issue. As a matter of fact, I co-authored a book on discrimination for the M C L E as well. It's not, it's not to tout myself, but you know, it, it, it's just to give me some credence when I, I speak about this. The issue raised, if we look at the whole project. You know, the, the whole policy, maybe frame in terms of, maybe there are lawyers out there, maybe frame in terms of uh. Adverse impact, but when we look at adverse impact theory. We, we need to look at the totality of everything, facts, statistics. Um, operation. Uh, implementation of, of, of. All the branches that are necessary in, in, in. Moving forward with the project, but the bottom line is. For the best interest of the students. I, I look at the whole thing. I've, I've, I did. Really like the model of equity used in that pro- pro- project. Well, there are questions regarding parent involvement. I don't know how much we can do about it. I believe that the school, the administration had endeavored its best effort in, in implementing that. But the bottom line is, if we look at the statistics and everything. The concerns raised by certain community members uh on equity, especially re- relating to discrimination under the. Adverse impact theory, there's none. So that's my piece and um. I'm here to support you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins.
Setting on before you. Um, the. So just my thoughts about the, the, the merger. For me, it has always lied in. Um, and maybe this sort of speaks to uh Mr. Tron's comment is that when it comes down to equity, there are. Hmm, I don't think that definition is the right word. People are operating off of many different frameworks as to what they consider equity. And that's always a part, that's probably the, the first part of the co-creative and the co-development process that needs to be established. It sounds like, um, you know, Dr. Granger um was part of that work and Dr. Grantson is part of that work. Um, and that we're all part of that work, whether we, whatever our respective frameworks for equity. Um, are. That said, with particularly the, the Shaw Taylor, my concerns have always been on. Really the guarantees around the facilities improvement in the interim because we know. That it's going to take time for new buildings to, 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 to be constructed. So we want to make sure that their facilities and that their resources are guaranteed. Throughout these process, whether that's financial or that's the, the, the psychological, the social supports that are needed to support. The community um through this disruption. Um, and for me, community engagement involves, of course, everyone that has been named, including the students. I'd like to see students as part of this process. Um, as well, I would like to be, like, I, I accept the invitation that I heard earlier in the public comment to. To be a part of that um conversation and just to be there to listen. Um, and to reflect what I'm hearing from the community in terms of its needs. Um. I think most of my questions, uh, I think all of my questions really have been answered with regard to the M S B A. Um, you know, I, I don't know what the, the strength is of, of the application, but I do know that it is stronger with a merged school community. Um, so I will say that. Um. I, I think, I think it comes down to how truly. And authentically co-developed and co-created the processes for community engagement for, for people at, at, with, with the Shaw Taylor. And for the Sumner and the Filbrick, um, like same as well. Um. This is something that I think is probably the, the scaled approach. Um, and that's probably the most important jewel that probably needs to be thought of and dissected, you know, before we, we, we move forward. Um, I'd like to hear more about the iterative process of evaluation. Um, for this pro- like for community engagement and thinking about that. Um, because it should be present from the beginning, documenting our choice points at, at all stages, not necessarily just. Was, what was the impact of everything, um, because impact is even that is split up into a number of different lenses. Um, but yes, making sure that we're documenting at every um point and that the community is the owners. Of this process and it's not, and uh, you know, to your point superintendent about sort of decentralizing. Um, B P S, like I think in really centering um the community in that process. And so that they know that they own this process and that they have power. Um, in, in, in choosing how their community gets shaped and formed. Um. So, um. You know, and, you know, Mr. Tron, you, you know, you know, I love you. Uh, I, I just, I would also just say. We can be very wary about how we use our power to sort of. invalidate how others are actually feeling and processing. It is very possible that folks feel differently. Um, and. I just want to put that out there, just, just being wary of how we use our power to either say that people are wrong or. You know, or regardless of that, of, of, of what you feel, people are coming with. Real concerns and, and, and it comes from a place that's genuine, just like you are. And I would just, you know, I'm just putting it out there just to be wary of it. But, thank you.
If, if I could just answer that uh short, very quickly, um. Thank you and um, I uh appreciate your, your, you know, your remark and, and your reminder. Um, I have always been very careful in, in um. Making my uh thoughts and um. Uh, my analysis, um. You know, uh, objectively and of course. There are, uh, well, especially given the, the, the current, the, the, the current climate. Um, in our society. Um, um, legal professions, especially the uh. Anything that deals with the law, uh, pretty much a fluid. Well, at least uh, uh, the, the prior four years and, and going until now, it's very fluid. I understand that. And I, I do appreciate your concern and I, I, I'm very mindful when I make my, my, my comments. It's, it's very much. My own to own, but at the same time. Um, hopefully some of my remarks or some of my analysis can be taken into consideration. From other people who may have looked at the issue differently. I, I do know that. We all analyze the lens of equity in accordance with our, you know, our experience, our learning and um. Our, um, you know, our belief. So I love you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I have a few follow-ups. One, I just want to acknowledge what I heard um Rebecca Granger sh- share earlier. Um, about the schedule for engagement. I'm curious, I guess, one, I'm happy to hear that and. And we had talked about it here, that year-long calendar of sort of what folks can expect and what they, where, when they can calendar those opportunities. Uh, first question is when that calendar gets released?
Um, thank you for that question. Um. If the school committee votes in favor of the merger, um, our team is ready to release that calendar. As soon as possible to the broader community.
So, I'm just pushing here, is like, does that mean like immediately? It's like ready to go, it's done, it's just like. Download, send?
Yes, so we have, we have um calendar, a calendar, a, a built-out calendar for the community. And we will be able to send that um as soon as, uh, if the, if the commu- if the committee uh votes. Um, in favor of the merger, we will be able to send that calendar by the end of this week.
And then a second comment was made earlier this evening about um any re- like reinvestment of any savings. Uh, from the Shaw Taylor merger would continue at the school. I have a question about the length of that reinvestment. I just want folks to go in really sober about what that means. And is that savings um that includes the money that. They've been receiving from being held harmless for any um under enrollment. As well as the impact on sort of S R funds.
I think Chief Cooter can help with um some of these answers. I think the goal of the reinvestment is the strategy to um again show the power of consolidation. And instead of spreading out, um, you know, the resources to be able to concentrate them and have the community have some. Um, decision-making over what it gets used for. Um.
I'm just asking, I guess more as like, we are having a separate conversation during the budget cycle about clawing back funds potentially in the next year. This would then live outside of the funding formula, so how long does the increase, what can they expect, how long? Because unless we're saying in perpetuity, but like if not, what's the length that we're making this commitment to the community for and what can they count on?
So Chief Cooter, do you wanna?
Yeah, I think so, certainly, um, you know, part of what the, the superintendent's mentioned is we're not looking to, to sort of use this as a way to save money. This is an opportunity for us to strengthen the school community. I think just a quick reminder in terms of the timing of this merger, we're not talking about a merger for this fall. Um, and so this merger would take place after S R funds are, uh, have ended for the school community. So certainly, um, strengthen the schools to have a more sustainable program model, um, as um Chief Stanislaus has mentioned. Um, the other thing I'll just note is we're doing the Reimagine School Funding Project and sort of thinking about what every school needs to have. Um, so there's a lot of different factors that are happening, but the biggest thing here is for us to think about what is the right model for the school. Um, and to support it in the transition and not use it as an opportunity to sort of save money. in the short run.
Yeah, and I think with the goal of stabilization. So I think that this is where the ongoing work with the, you know, with the design team and the community relative to whatever positions are either duplicated or shared. You know, stability, you know, and the ability to kind of go forward in a sustainable way is going to be the goal for that new community.
Copy. I always get in trouble for going times. I'm just being punchier with this question. So what is the money that they can expect to receive? Because I'm like hearing all the good value stuff and we've been doing values and I think part of where I'm getting lost in the sauce is like, let's get really granular here. Like what we're saying they're going to receive, what are they receiving?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's in part the work that happens after the vote, if it is a positive vote, that's working with that team because each of the mergers is going to be different and the value that they're placing on particular positions would be, as is the combination of student need from it. So I don't think that there's like a concrete, they're going to get this, 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 this. I think right now, what we want to be able to do is to work with the community to identify what in the leaders, what they are seeing are the things of value to them that they believe in the merger and the creation of the new community are going to be needed. So I think some of the things that have been discussed around what I would call kind of the family facing, like the nurses and the social workers, right? Those are to me very reasonable kinds of request and expectation. I also think we've had some conversation about, you know, as schools become the new community, one of the things that we could provide is hub and making them a hub site where there would be a hub coordinator to begin to kind of build as a joint activity, what the community wants out of their hub center, their community school.
What are then the financial guardrails? Because like if I'm sitting back, a parent at the school, I'm thinking, all right, like we have to, at this point, it sounds like whoever shows up the loudest is going to get the biggest slice of the cake. Right? Like tell us what you need and we're going to deliver. Where, because from a governing level, we're not saying this is how much we have to work with. And so far, we are hearing certain voices louder at these meetings. And so we're picking up what folks want more. My fear without guardrails is that we actually further create inequities and without clarity around what you can dream for, we also create inequities. Like some people feel really comfortable asking for a lot. And a lot of folks don't because they don't even know what the system can offer them. And so just being like, come to the table and tell us what you need. That is a very inequitable process in itself. You know what I mean? And so I guess maybe it's like, I'm asking for, I'm asking for the ceiling, I'm asking for the floor. I guess I'm asking for guardrails here. Like what can people expect in this process? So that it does feel equitable and it's not just who is the loudest gets the most.
Right. Yeah, I think this is the work right now that our team's doing as, you know, Dell and the capital planning staffs up, there'll be recommendations, but I do think being able to work with these two, you know, the first kind of two through and being able to hear how they're experiencing it and perceiving it is going to help to inform a bit. But ultimately, the capital planning team will be making some recommendations along with the, you know, there'll be an academic person, social, emotional on Dell's team. And they'll be able to sort of look at what the configuration of those schools are, what are the programs that they have combined? And then they'll make some recommendations as to what they think they've heard and what they believe we can support. Sorry.
I know I'm out of time, but I will say this, unintentionally sets precedent for every other merger. That we are going into a merger without clarity around our financial commitments. And that's, I mean, and I'm thinking, this was not what I was thinking going into this. I actually thought it was going to be an easier question to get an answer to. But like, that is not a healthy precedent as we're talking about multiple mergers to be like, we'll figure it out as we go. That's a blank check that, you know, as a governing body, like I just don't see us having. And I mean, I really do mean what I say. Two things are true. I think we need to be merging, consolidating, closing schools. I think it's good for kids and I think it is driven by that to do that work. I think it is inherently good to offer kids more options in the school that they're at. But I also find processes like these to be deeply inequitable. When it's just like, show up and let us know what you want. When it's like, no, you got to tell us a little bit about what we can, what's on the menu. I don't just go to a restaurant and order filet mignon. Like you got to tell me what's on the menu and how much I'm spending and then I'll let you know if I'm getting an entree or an appetizer or dessert. But right now it just feels like I worry that it will feel like broken promises because everyone's going to be hearing something different when you don't provide guardrails.
I think, you know, Nate, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but in looking at, you know, with Panda and looking at sort of like the cost savings, you know, if you want to kind of contribute to what you, what are kind of like general expectations of the types of cost savings that we can expect from the mergers, from which there'd be some portion of reinvestment.
Superintendent, before Chief Cooter jumps in, do you mind if I take a stop? Brandon shared. So I wanted to first just like share sort of the journey and the thinking towards the reinvestment back into the classroom for this initial merger and sort of like talk more about like working on for long term. So for this initial merger with the Shaw Taylor, when we're talking about reinvesting funds back into the school and working in collaboration with the design team. At the school committee meeting on the 26th, we showed different diagrams of what a merged community would look like. Looking at those diagrams, it showed the consolidation of two classrooms, which would which would mount to about $300,000 worth of savings. And how those savings would be reinvest into, be reinvested into the school when thinking about things like art spaces, gyms, et cetera, just facility upgrades. Those decisions we plan to make in collaboration with the design team for schools. Also, when thinking about the equity pieces, there's the school design study along with the facilities condition assessment plan that will then produce the district-wide facilities plan. Going forward, when thinking about decision-making, there's going to be a process in place. And the rep tool, the rep tool is being used as part of the, the, the school design study to ensure that equity is at the forefront of the decision-making that we're going to make, that we will be making in the future. I will now pass it over to Chief.
I, just before Chief Cooter goes, this is the sort of clarity I'm asking for, but it is part of the projection we should have. Right? Like we project X in savings and we anticipate offering those savings to the merged schools for X number of years. Like we've got to get specific so that, you know what I mean? I'm sorry, Mr. Cooter.
No, I don't think I have much more to add. I think they'll handled it well. And I think part of what we're talking about with these mergers is is solidifying the schools and being able to offer robust programming for the students. So as we start to make more investments and inclusive opportunities and start to make more investments through the reimagine school funding, that the schools are positioned to better leverage those resources and do the planning that's necessary going into the new building. So you know, I think there's, there is the, the short-term commitment around classroom consolidations and the short-term costs, but in the long term, what we're talking about is more robust experiences for the students through multi-graded or sort of multi-classroom grades at each multi-classroom grades for throughout the school. Multiple cohorts.
I'm out of time, so thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Dr. Alkins?
Yeah, I heard earlier about the, the calendar sort of not being released. My question is, is how is the calendar determined?
Dylan, Rebecca, do you want to?
Sure, I'm happy to jump in. So in the merger proposal report, there is the the eight-week cycle where there every other week is a design meeting and then so it's week one, week three and week five are design and then week seven is community. Right now, the calendars are set so that Shaw Taylor, the design team meeting meets on Thursdays. So that would then continue throughout. So every seventh week would be a public community meeting. Right now, the Philbrick Sumner are on Mondays. And so that means that their community meeting would be every seven weeks on a Monday. That allows a regular routine. We have to adjust a bit for those Mondays because of the holidays. But that allows a regular routine so that communities can actually see far in advance when those meetings would be.
Okay, so I understand that. I understand that structure. And I would say moving forward, I mean, just from with equity being involved at every step of the way, then that like the community has to set what those meeting schedules look like. And oftentimes, because what I, because what I hear about not just for this process, but for other processes is that BPS sort of sets the scale for when meetings typically are. But then actually as a committee, what we hear mostly is a meeting gets canceled, somebody pulls out or you know, and doesn't reschedule or and then it's impossible to get BPS back on the phone or for whatever reason. So this is why like when we say equity at every step of the way, what we mean is is that they're involved in even determining what that schedule looks like so that there's a sense of ownership. It's a minor, perhaps a minor thing, but it is essential to when we're thinking about equity at the core of everything that we're trying to do. Even if it's done with the best of intentions, the ownership needs to be within that community determining that process. So.
Yeah, the original design team meetings were determined by the design team that times actually shifted to better fit the schedules of the design team members. That said, I think being able to put out a schedule far in advance, we then can speak to the communities and that conversation can be guided by the design team. I'll say that the design teams both actually planned the last larger community meetings and it shifted the structure of what those even looked like. So those times also, you know, being able to say we're making a full year commitment, but that it can also be shifted to make sure that the most people can join if that means a different time or something like that. There definitely can be that type of flexibility built in as long as it's long in advance so that the most people can, can attend. But the current times have been set by community and design, but again, the whole goal of this is to make sure as many voices are able to, like you always elevate, co-create. I love that language. Which means that plan is there for the communities to be a part of.
Thank you. Mr. Carden Hernandez? Oh, you took your hand down? Sorry.
No, I was, I'm sorry. I was talking while I was on mute. Was Ms. Lopeta before me or?
No, I'm the only, yours was the only other hand that was up and I believe Mr. O'Neil.
Okay, great. I will ask my questions. I have, I think two more. I do have a question. It is actually piggybacking off of the question Member Lopeta asked around the leadership identification. I think this probably goes back to the similar question in many ways I was asking earlier around a little bit more clarity from the district about some infrastructure pieces. And so is there, if I'm a member of the community of a school that is being merged after vote, is there an approximation of a timeline where I would know who is leading that merger? And an approximation of the timeline when a principal or a school leader would be identified? I ask this for two reasons. I choose my own child's school based on the leadership of that school. Like I want to know and trust and believe in it and families are going to be making decisions through this process as well. And I'm not, I don't, I don't know enough about the leaders to have any opinion about them. I just recognize as a parent and as a former principal myself, like people made decisions based on you and who your team was. And so I guess I'm asking like, when do we know after a merger, who is the leader of the merger, who's leading the communities through the process? Unless it's all consensus-driven or when we will know who the principal is of the school? Like what's the timeline there?
So Dell, I don't know if you want to speak to what's been said at the design teams relative to this and then I can give my thinking on it.
As the team is working on this process, we're confident that we'll have this all squared away before assignment season in the fall.
Before assignment or the process where families are selecting schools? Of the process where they're selecting, I'm following it. Thank you.
So I would just, what I would add to that is that I think part of the new community piece would be to, you know, look at principal job description. So that we make sure that that reflects the values of the merged communities. And so I think, you know, we obviously would want to time it to your point so that parents would have a sense of the leadership going into it. It also can be difficult because if it is from a timing standpoint, if it's out of cycle of when people are looking for positions, then, you know, it may actually be more beneficial to have that process play out during the time period in which most people are applying for a leader role. So that's why I think this is an area that, you know, the team is working on actively and we're talking with the schools team about it. To see what's the best course, if it's to sort of create the stabilization as we go through the merger and then be able to work on that new description and then have it be timely to when leaders typically will put their hat in for things.
Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I sorry, I apologize. I have a cold and a cough, so I'll try to keep my comment short. Deeply appreciate this conversation, the work that the district has done. I think my fellow members have fleshed out a lot of the issues and thoughts that I had. Excuse me. So I do want to say I was struck during public comment, obviously we'll listen to them all and we, and we take the input and it helps inform our opinions, including going back. Me listening to the feedback for the meeting I was not able to attend. But I was very struck tonight by the parent who said, basically she said, we have been the guinea pig. And here are the lessons learned about how the district got better at what they were doing as we worked through this. And she talked about the value of having parents involved in the planning process and the things they noticed that maybe the district hadn't or hadn't appeared to be hadn't appeared to come to mind. And that was pretty powerful testimony to hear. You know, the issues that they thought of. And so I think it is critical. Both in the continued planning process for these four schools to become two. If it is the will of the committee tonight to do that, and I do support the superintendent's recommendation, I will say that. I think it is important that we continue to have the parent voice at the forefront right at the table as we work through this. right at the table as we work through this. Um, and also we think long and hard about the lessons learned on on these two proposals as we consider others, because we do have single strand schools that are not able to have a lot of the facilities that we know our children need to have to thrive in education. They're not able to have inclusion to the ability that we would like them to have or inclusive opportunities, I should say, to the ability that we would like them to have. So we do have some challenges in front of us as we consider. We know our parents love the small, single strand schools. Yet they're presenting challenges for us as we try to deal with this issue of excess capacity. We also have, and and I'm supportive of of these proposals tonight. I do also point out, we have a number of schools that are very successful as two campus schools or in one case, a three campus school, both elementary schools and high schools that have figured out a model of how to work and we should be looking closely at them. I do say I can think of one school that was a merger of two in West Roxbury, but I can think of others that are two and three campuses that have been organic growth because the school itself has been of choice to parents and has continued to grow. But we should look closely at how those schools handle leadership, but also handle staffing issues, not only for teachers, but supportive staff. You know, nursing councils, that type of thing. And look at what his work and what their challenges are, because those are existing schools that are two and three campuses right now. So we have great examples that we can look to to talk with them and get them involved in the planning process for these potentially two new you know, standalone merge schools as well. And the last point I want to make is superintendent, I really appreciated your comment about the Shaw Taylor and the potential of it being a hub school because one of the things we're saying is that such small schools, they don't have access to a lot of the programs and services and partnerships and after school activities, et cetera, that we want our schools to have. And as as we look to roll out the hub school model tomorrow, we should put that community at the forefront. Because that helps solve exactly one of the reasons why we say we need to do mergers like this, to give our students more access to partnerships to out of school activities, to after school activities that fully surround their educational opportunities. So I'll I'll stop at that because I'm about to have another coughing fit. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I too want to thank Becca Dell, the whole team that has been working on this tirelessly for months. This is not easy work. I think that we all know that this is long overdue work for our district. And we're just at beginning. And as we thank the schools who have been the guinea pigs in this, we know that mistakes have been made and that there is a lot of work we're going to need to do. And a lot of decisions that still are not made with regard to direction, et cetera, will be needed to be done over the next year. With the vote tonight, we we really are starting the next level of these discussions and decisions. For the Shaw Taylor, we have a year, another year to continue to have these discussions. And by the end of this calendar year, we'll understand where we are with um, the direction for a new school. But it doesn't mean that we we stop planning and go on with business and then come back to it. These are conversations we're going to be having all over our district. And as we've listened to our news, we're hearing that there are school, independent schools and school districts all over our state and all over the country that are also having to deal with closures, mergers. You know, some without very much notice to their communities. So I I thank the committee, even though this is hard work, that we will take what it needs to take to get these to be done as right as we can, but also to set up ourselves for a very long process to deal with the with what we will be needing to deal with once we get the facilities um, planned back. And um, looking at the fact that we need to create more inclusive schools. So this work is just very much in its infancy. And so I know we all have to roll up our sleeves and deal with many things that are going to be very hard and difficult for us. But in the end, if we don't take action, the very people that we're here to serve are the ones that will suffer, which are our children. We have been, you know, kicking this can down the road for years. This this committee often has to face hard decisions and often have backed away from those decisions. But again, the people that suffer the most of our kids. So we all know this has to be done and we're doing it with our eyes wide open. And we'll work very hard to hold the district accountable to get the answers that we need. I'm going to thank Mr. Cardet Hernandez about the the questions about the budget, because I think that's something that we all want to hear and know and understand. And I understand that once we make this vote, as we move forward, we'll have to dig deep to get to those things. But we we really do, we really do need to understand what kind of monies we're talking about, when they'll be available so that we can be as clear with our communities as we can. Our kids have great needs. We know right now we're spending a lot of money on keeping our buildings open, but it is not improving the outcomes of our kids. I often refer to it our our soft landings as the section eight of education. In section eight, you pay the difference between what the um, the the owner wants and what you can afford, but it doesn't improve the quality of what you're getting. You know, and it's time that we improve the quality of what our kids got get and that this billion dollars is really going to improve the outcomes for all of our children, no matter which neighborhood, no matter which school. And we know now that there is a lot of inequity in what our our small schools can afford, depending on the neighborhood you're in. But at least in this first trial, we are going to be working towards more more equity. So I am ready to move on to do the votes unless there is any final question or comment. Okay. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
I'm, I'm sorry, because I wanted you to have the last word, but I will just say I will ask every single week what that guardrail is that we're putting in place, because I think it is just
I hear you.
For the community to know. So superintendent, with all love, just be ready. It's it's I previewed that I was going to do it around exam schools this week. Like, I will ask every week, because we can't have them moving through a process without clarity around what they can spend and what the the budget is that they should dream with it.
Okay, thank you. All right, the committee will take two votes, one on each merger. I will now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to merge the John D. Philbrick Elementary School and Charles Sumner Elementary School into one school community located at the Irving Building, serving grades K zero to six, starting in the school year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. So I think we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvics, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to merge the Pauline A. Shaw Elementary School and the Charles H. Taylor Elementary School into a single school community that serves grades K zero to six, beginning in school year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvics, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Parvics, and thank you to all the school communities who engage with us on these proposals. We know that tonight's vote is just one step in this process. We look forward to continuing this collaboration into joint school communities that better serve our students and families. Our first report this evening is a tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee Committee and SEIU Local eight 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 Professional Employees Chapter, Department of Planning and Engineering, also known as P and E. Before I turn it over to Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace with assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we continue to make progress on all of the union contracts. I think we're almost done for the year. Really to bring them current um, and up to date. Tonight, you'll hear from our Director of Labor Relations, Jeremiah Hassan on a recently agreed upon collective bargaining agreement for our planning and engineering who play, you know, these, the the folks in P and E really play a critical role in keeping our school facilities safe, updated. Uh, you know, I I want to thank the union for their collaboration uh along the way in the process and for the work of their members every day uh to keep our our school facilities um up to date and safe. So I'll now turn it over to uh Jeremiah to be able to um, give you the specifics.
Thank you, Superintendent Chair Robinson. Thank you, committee members. Thanks for having me. Uh, I'm excited tonight to present the tentative agreement that we were able to reach uh with the SEIU P and E team. This agreement is is fairly consistent with what you've seen from some of our other units, especially those who are housed under our facilities department. The agreement is actually broken up into two separate agreements uh each for three years, covering a total period from September first, two thousand twenty, uh all the way to August thirty first, two thousand twenty six. So three, two agreements, three years each. The first agreement is strictly a wages only uh agreement. It's a the wage pattern that follows the most of the other contracts that have presented to you. It is, it calls for two percent increases in fiscal year twenty one, two point five percent wage increases in fiscal year twenty two, and two point five percent increases in fiscal year twenty three. Uh, in addition to the general wage increases, there is a thousand dollar bonus for those members who are active during the fiscal year twenty one, uh twenty two. The second agreement, also fairly straightforward, it comes with a three year uh period prospectively, beginning at nine one, two thousand twenty three. That wage increase, uh, the pattern is two point five percent in FY twenty four, and then two percent in FY twenty five and two percent in FY twenty six. In addition to the wages, the parties also agreed to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day uh and also codified some of the current practice regarding uh requesting a sick leave for these employees. So not a whole lot of changes, but we have a a good, strong working relationship with this group. Uh, and we're encouraged by this agreement. We think it's fair and favorable both for this unit uh and for the district. So I recommend voting in favor of these agreements and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I'll now up to the committee for questions or comments. No, thanks. Um, thank you all. And the committee looks forward to taking action on these agreements at our next meeting on June seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And I just, to reiterate, Superintendent Skipper's, um, I just want to thank the bargaining team for uh the SEIU locally today. Uh, we were able to work very well together to get, again, what I think is a a fair deal for both bodies. So thank you to them and for the bargaining team on uh PPS and side for all the work that they put into this agreement. So, thank you.
Yes. Our next report this evening is interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. Committee members, what we call, this is an annual request the finance team makes to the school committee to keep our district moving smoothly. I'm going to turn it over to Nate Cooter.
Good evening, Chair Robinson and members of the school committee. Um, as this, the chair mentioned, tonight, we're presenting a request for the approval of an interim salary payment order for personnel paid from external funds as well as encumbrances for non-personal expenditures. This is an annual request that is necessary to ensure that there are no delays in paychecks for grant funded employees and to allow for the establishment of contracts across all funding sources. Grants listed in the memo you received are projected to be awarded for fiscal year twenty four and will be submitted for approval at a future school committee meeting as they are awarded. However, due to the timing associated with receiving external fund award letters and finalized budgets from various funding sources, it has become necessary for us to request this interim payment order annually at this time. The purpose of this order is to authorize the districts, the district, excuse me, in cases judged to be of no risk, to request the city auditor to approve spending on these specific grants. It is important to note that in the unfortunate event that a grant is not awarded, any expenditure incurred will be covered from the general fund. I would like to emphasize that this is a technical step that will greatly benefit our district's financial operations. It will ensure smooth functioning of our payroll and payment systems. Thank you for your attention and consideration, your support in approving this interim salary payment order and non-personal encumbrances is greatly appreciated. I invite any questions or concerns you may have regarding this.
Are there any questions, concerns? Well, then, hearing none, thank you. And the committee looks forward to taking action on this request at our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our final report this evening is an admission policy recommendation for Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. In a moment, we'll turn it over to Dr. Lynda McIntyre, Deputy Chief of Schools, and Jason Samaha, an English teacher at Madison Park. First, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. And I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, tonight, you will hear the Madison Park Leadership Team on our proposed admissions policy for Madison Park. Um, just as a reminder, DESI requires um that all career vocational technical education schools have an admissions policy. The school's intervention team last year also recommended a policy. So for the the last uh year or so, the the school and the key stakeholders have been working together, meeting to bring forward um their proposed policy for tonight for your consideration. Although this is a requirement, uh, tonight's presentation is more than just checking a box. You know, we're making um major investments in Madison Park to provide really, you know, world-class top of the line educational programming in the facilities needed to support that programming. So I'm I'm proud and happy to turn it over to Dr. McIntyre to uh be able to share some of the work that the team has done and their recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper, and good evening, Chair Robinson, members of the committee, as well as members of the community. Tonight, we will present to you the Madison Park Technical Vocational High School Admissions Policy. I'll reiterate what Superintendent Skipper initially said that this policy is in alignment with the Massachusetts State Regulation that suggests all CVTE schools in the Commonwealth have a policy. This policy is built on and ensures equity for all
This policy is built on and ensures equity for all and unfettered access to programming. Educational opportunities will include at Madison Park no limitations, no biases, but will admit students and make available to them all programs, privileges, and courses of study without regard to race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, or language. It is committed to ensuring equity for access for all of our students, and it will not use and does not use grades, attendance, conduct history in determining a student's eligibility for admissions. I would like at this point to turn the presentation over to Mr. Jason Samaha and his colleagues, who have worked tirelessly throughout the year to build this policy. So he will work in collaboration with Ms. Larinda Briggs, Mr. Perrino Watson, as dedicated members of the Madison Park community, which is led by Dr. Sydney Brown. Jason, take it away.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. McIntyre. So good evening, Chair Robinson, members of the school committee, Superintendent Skipper. Thank you for having us here tonight so that we can present this policy that we really think is a forward-thinking and equitable admissions policy. My name is Jason Samaha. I'm an ELA teacher at Madison Park. In addition to my regular ELA duties, I also co-teach in our RockSMAP early college program that partners with Bunker Hill Community College. I'm proud to say that we have a cohort of about 20 sophomore students who have now earned six college credits going into their junior year of high school. So I'm really proud about that. Of course, I'm only one of a team. I want to introduce Larinda Briggs, one of our assistant heads of school. She is not only the leader of our freshman class this year, but she's also the administrator in charge of Madison's tremendous and amazing ELA department. I'm extraordinarily proud of our ELA department, especially my ELA 10 colleagues with us, as well as Perrino Watson, who is one of the most dedicated Madison Park folks I know. He is one of our vocational directors. He moved into the role just this year. Before that, he was a longtime vocational teacher in the hugely successful facilities management program. Perrino, Linda, and I have spent a lot of time together over the past year or so, and we're incredibly proud of this policy presented to you tonight. I also want to thank Madison Park's head of school, Dr. Brown, for his initiative, leadership, and guidance throughout this. And I also want to acknowledge the unending support and availability of both Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Eccleston. So the, sort of the central question that I think people are asking, might be asking themselves, why are we doing this? As Superintendent Skipper said at the beginning, and Dr. McIntyre said as well, DESI sort of requires that all career vocational technical education schools, CVTE or CTE schools, require this. The intervention team, as well as countless other internal, external observers past 15 or 20 years have suggested that an admissions policy would be one way to improve Madison Park. But really, this does is get to sort of our core problem, is we want to make sure that Madison Park, that all students at Madison Park know that this is a CVTE school and want to pursue this type of education. Next slide, please. So as you can see on this slide, this sort of breaks it down into sort of like the two major facets, the content of what's in the application, and then what is the process that students will go through. So in the top part of that explains the content. There's the application, which is going to be either online or paper, translated into every language that a student would need to apply. The second part of this application packet is something called an artifact. This is where students get to choose a variety of different means to demonstrate their desire for CTE. This could be a video, it could be an essay, it could be an interview. There's a couple of different options there. And in addition to that, there's two letters of support. One of those letters of support should be from their school, and another could be from a community member, somebody else that can speak to them. One of the things that I want to stress, because this question has been asked a couple of times throughout this process, is a little more information about this artifact, and just I want to emphasize that it's not used in any evaluative way that these artifacts, you know, it's not, you know, we're basically trying to determine students' interest in CTE with it, as well as sort of like celebrate the diverse interests of students. So if you look at the bottom part of this, where it talks about the process, so you see sort of at the top, a student applies. You then, the student applies, they either have a full and complete packet or an incomplete packet. And I'm going to sort of start on the right side of this, where the incomplete packet is. So if a student submits, if a student submits an incomplete packet, what the school is going to do is reach out to the family, to the student, to the family, to the school, to find out, well, why is there an incomplete packet? We'll do some follow-up. We'll figure out what was the reason. Oh, maybe they didn't understand that they needed to include this part. We get that part from them. Now it's a full and complete packet. If there are extenuating circumstances, we sort of, the team of people will make a decision about, you know, what are the extenuating circumstances, and do we think that the student should still be considered eligible for a seat at Madison Park? So that are the two, that those would be the ways the student has, sort of gets to that full and complete packet. If a student, if there are more seats than students apply, every student who applies gets in. If there are more students that apply than we have, we have seats, the, we will use a lottery system, sort of a blind lottery. Next slide, please. Sort of like at the forefront of all of this has been, you know, is equity. This is sort of the thing that's been guiding us throughout it. And sort of what we wanted to do is just sort of explain that, sort of, I would say, these are the three major parts where equity really sort of surfaced in there and really became something that is really, really, we think, going to differentiate us from many other CTE schools in the state. And that, the first one is that lottery system that I was just talking about. Most, I think there's only one CTE school in the state that uses a lottery system. The vast majority of the other CTE schools use a points-based admissions policy, where they look at a student's grades, and they look at a student's conduct, they look at a student's, you know, attendance history. And what we found, and you'll see that there's lawsuits right now against, you know, many of these schools for this reason, that it's negatively impacting students of color, students with disability, and multilingual learners. So that's the first part of this that was one of our equity focuses. The second part is there's a mandate for, including the policies, this mandate for an annual review of student demographic data. So that we can take a look at, we admit this, this group of kids. All right, well, does this group of kids demographically look the same as the students that we have now? How does it compare to the BPS averages and these things? And if we find that there's some big discrepancies there, we'll do sort of a root cause analysis and take an appropriate action. The third part of this is we're going to make sure that, you know, everything, you know, all our materials, everything, the application, all parts of this are going to be available in translation. Next slide, please. During this process, we try to engage as many stakeholders as possible. We engage with members of the Friends of Madison Park, our school family parent council, our school site council, our students, our staff, our partners. We sort of did some surveys, focus groups, and discussions. We got, we heard from them, and then we drafted stuff up, and then we went back to these same groups and made more revisions and got back, you know, a ton of feedback. We partnered with the central office staff, including Welcome Services, Office of Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps. We met with DESI for a meeting, and they gave us a ton of really important feedback. And I think that we believe that all of these stakeholders had a real, true voice in this whole process, and that that voice is represented in what we're presenting to you tonight. Next slide, please. So this last slide here are sort of, probably I would say, the three most common questions that get asked of us here, you know, as we've been making this, you know, we've been creating and thinking about this policy. One is, does this mean that students from outside Boston are going to be admitted to Madison Park? In other words, is this going to turn Madison Park into a regional vocational technical school? And the answer to that is no. Madison Park is going to remain a Boston public school for Boston public school students, or Boston resident students, I should say. The second question that often gets asked is, there's going to be a waitlist. The only time there'll be a waitlist is if we, if we have to use a lottery, meaning there are more students than Madison has seats. And then we are hoping, you know, pending school committee approval, that this policy would be implemented in the fall of 2024. So it would be, the students get admitted in that, so it's the '24, '25 school year. And so with that, we can take questions if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I'd like to now open it up to the committee for questions. Mr. O'Neil?
I'll kick it off. Thank you for this presentation. I have two questions for you. One, how will you handle both the existing programs within Madison Park? So, you know, not just that they're applying to the school, but they're interested in culinary, or they're interested in auto repair, so on and so forth. Number one, so how will you handle that in program and add? And how will you handle students that want to transfer between programs when they're in there? So that's one question. And two, that's kind of an A and B for the first one. And then the sex of more about individual programs, and then the second, particularly about our students with special needs. Talk to me about that, how we make sure they are continued to be welcome. And, you know, I get nervous when I read applications where you have to have letters of support, you know, particularly from a school. So just talk to me a little bit about students with special needs and their continued welcome environment at Madison Park.
I can start, and then one of my Madison Park colleagues can finish. One of the wonderful things about this program is that we plan on maintaining all of the current programs and strands that are currently at the school. And so that's for the OSCD, the ABA, all of the strands that are currently there will remain in place. Our multilingual learner programs, our ESLs, nothing will change. We plan on honoring the opportunity to continue to engage the demographics of the students who currently reside in the school.
I would, I would say in regards to your question about the exploratory, we do have a, not exploratory vocations. For the freshmen, the incoming freshmen, they go through an exploratory phase where they are visiting all of the vocations, and they go through different phases, up to five phases. And Mr. Watson, who is our vocational director, can kind of speak more to that. But students do have an opportunity to learn about the vocations, decide which vocations they're interested in, spend more time with them, and then even as late as spring, kind of make a different decision. But I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Watson to kind of explain that further.
So I may just follow up on that before Mr. Watson speaks. So students are not applying for an individual vocation, then, is what you were saying?
No.
Okay.
Because with, with the freshmen, they, you know, not, not every freshman comes to freshman orientation, for example. So what we do is we give them an opportunity to learn more about the other vocations in, in, in different phases. And then, once they start to kind of get an interest, we use, we use a form for them to fill out, like what their interests are, kind of to guide them in some possible votes that they would like. And then from there, they continue the, instead of going to one, to one class, then maybe they go there three times, and then they, you know, in, in different phases. And then, then in January, for example, they make their decision for what vote they want to stay in. But then there is a grace period in April, because sometimes once students get in, they change their mind, or their interest changes, right? So just kind of.
Exactly. That's why I was curious about that. Thank you.
So to follow up with Ms. Briggs, we have a system, so it's called shadowing. So in, in the beginning, when the students do have the opportunity to go through the 20 programs that we have, by the end of, like you said, in December, they have maybe three to four choices to where they want to go, like first, second, and third, and fourth choice. So by the time February comes or January, when we're actually finishing the programs, they get a chance to go into the shops that they, you know, they would like to go to. The way we do that is that, you know, most of the students get the grades that they're supposed to get, they get their points. And then sometimes if the program is filled, like for instance, the limit is 20 per students in most of the programs, and some of them are 16. So if you have more than 25 students that want to go into auto, and auto can only take 20, then they'll have a second choice, maybe in auto collision, which is kind of in the same field. And because we have at least four or five different construction programs, we try to make sure that the students are on the same plane, whether it be plumbing, electricity, carpentry. So they're kind of in the same field. When you look at their programs that they choose, we try to keep everything in the same family. And then we have in April, if the students really didn't, you know, like where they were, or they weren't having a good experience, then they have an opportunity to maybe shadow another program for a week or two, and then we make a decision on how we can support them into the program that they picked.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden Hernandez?
What is the specific enrollment change that we're looking at?
We have, let's see, we're between 850 to 1,000 students that come in. So an enrollment change, I mean, because this would be a first time for us, we're still hoping that we still keep the same amount, you know, up to 1,000 students.
But what is different about the enrollment process that we're looking at? Like, what is shifting? I think that's just sort of a point of clarity. I hear what is new. I guess what was the old way?
I think because.
Open enrollment?
It was just fully open enrollment, and now we're looking to add a screen?
Yes.
And the, is there fear in adding this screen without, it's sort of interesting, right? Because what I'm hearing is we're screening and not measuring the quality of what you do, which is like, it's like bureaucracy at its best, right? Like, we're just like, we're going to add a few more steps to see if you're really that interested. And, right? Like, it's like, we're, because it doesn't sound like we're evaluating the letters of recommendation. It doesn't sound like we're looking, we're evaluating the artifact. But we are making more work for kids and families to get into the school. And on some level, too, even more work for educators to write recommendations that no one's really going to read.
Oh, I believe we'll read the recommendations. I think what ultimately we're trying to do is correct a situation where children are assigned to the school without necessarily agreeing to want to have a vocational education.
That makes sense.
That's what we're doing. And so that, then we have to either convince them that this is what they have to have, or they're miserable, and we have to seek a transfer. And so this is just a way of allowing students who are coming from the eighth grade to know that this is a vocational school, this is a CVT school. And here's what that means, right? So that they're making an informed decision to be at a school that they desire.
And if they're.
Programs they want to learn.
That makes sense to me. The, the layers of sort of red tape for. That makes sense to me. The, the layers of sort of red tape for me seem hard to wrap my head around. That's just where, you know, I always share this in this room. I was a kid who grew up in a foster home. So like, there were not a lot of folks who were making sure I got my recommendations in there to make sure I had an artifact or on some Real Talk, or even saving the artifacts that I produced at school. And so like, we create barriers of access when you create red tape that isn't fully evaluated. So that, that's just where my head goes and I'm just having a Real Talk moment. The, the second question I have is for folks who are new to the city or come in, uh, as new immigrants or move in the middle of the year. If there is still open seats, it does mean that without those things, they wouldn't have access to the school, correct?
If there are still open seats and no waitlist, they can apply and have entrance.
I think, I think one of the, sorry.
No, finish your thought. I apologize.
No, I, I was just going to say, one of the things that, that we sort of tried to build in is if you go back to that where if a student applies, but they sort of have that incomplete application where they don't have, you know, an artifact or letter recommendation. That's when we reach out to the student, to the family, to the school to find out are there extenuating circumstances? For, you know, for, for a particular student, that's, I think that's one of the ways that we tried to address that issue, because I, I hear you on that.
I can agree. We talked about, um, one of the things, um, once the admissions policy is approved, is creating, um, creating an admissions policy, uh, committee as well as having a coordinator at the school. Because that was one of the things when we were kind of thinking about what if a student has an incomplete? What if there's, um, a circumstance or a reason why they're missing something, reaching out to the counselors? And, and this will be a part of our recruitment phase, right? Uh, making sure that, um, as Dr. McIntyre said, students are aware at Madison Park, what kind of school, uh, we are, what we can offer, but also make it to where, um, we're also reaching out, um, to counselors and, and, you know, getting a better understanding of how we can better support students and help students understand what Madison Park has to offer.
Thank you for those answers. Is it fair to then assume that part of what you're solving for is a broken communication structure in the earlier grades from other schools? As well as a lack of clarity when families are either visiting enrollment centers or filling out enrollment forms?
I would agree because, um, someone mentioned this earlier. The difference now is that when students come to Madison Park, sometimes they're not aware that we're not a comprehensive high school. Right? That we are a technical vocational high school, which means in order to graduate, you have to not only pass your academics, but you have to pass your, uh, vocation. So if a student is not interested in a vocation, uh, to Dr. McIntyre's point, it makes your time a little bit more difficult trying to convince students in one of our 20 programs.
Yeah, it's, it would be awful. I could, like, you know, that it would be an awful experience to end up somewhere with such a focus that you're on, that you're completely uninterested in. There is something, and I'm sure you're hearing this superintendent, like it does speak to the counseling that students receive during the application process for high school specifically. Cause if like, we have data where people are like, I don't even know what this school was, and that's the one I got into. Like, there's, that is a very broke, we have a broken process around, you know, information sharing. And, you know, I, I think sometimes we often use the word equity in a, in a sort of jargony way. But like, there is real inequity in that experience if folks are being sort of pushed into a high school system without knowing where they're going. And it, there is a part that saddens me that like, as a result of that broken support and communication and a sense of belonging and being known in your earlier grades, we have to create a new type of sort of red tape that may actually deter kids who are interested and yet haven't experienced the mode, the sec, the type of success that leads to motivation and so won't actually engage in that process.
Right. So I think, um, so a couple of things. First of all, I think the team's doing a fantastic job, um, in presenting and answering the questions. So I think there's a reason, right, why Desi actually requires this, right? So this isn't unique to fix something just specific in Boston. It's just much more that in order to make a healthy match, because career tech vocational education is intense. You know, it is a very different type of education. The, you know, the commitment to do internship and go out into the field and to gain your OSHA and your certification takes a commitment and it's a parent awareness and it's a student awareness. So I think that's the reason why in general, Desi requires there is some kind of admissions policy, if for nothing else, to make sure that students and parents are fully informed. I also think that in the case of BPS, we can do a much better job making sure like down to the seventh grade, you know, rising sixth graders and then rising, uh, eighth graders, that students understand the difference of what vocational ed is. And actually can kind of start to see some of the fields they could go into potentially from going to, um, you know, Madison Park. I think there's an opportunity for Madison Park to reach down into our seventh and eighth grades, go and visit the schools. This is something we started in Somerville, where we would actually have the kids from, um, you know, the CTE programs go down and actually present. Um, and in kind of career fairs to the students, um, and talk about what their studies are, why they really like the particular career that they're studying, um, or what they thought when they went in for exploratory. And then they ended up choosing something entirely different. It's those kinds of connections that go beyond just reading something in an admissions policy, but it kind of brings it to the life. Um, so I think that what Madison Park has put forward here is thoughtful, um, in the sense that we don't want the barriers, um, that they addressed earlier of the quality issue, which is what's coming up in the regionals. Um, in that kind of deep screening on the admissions policy. But what we do want is to have, is to inform our young people and to inform our parents and to have them give thought as to why they want to spend the next four years in a vocational CTE setting. And so the combination of, um, you know, adults that they trust, writing recommendations, that, that, that seems like a good fit, as well as the student themselves being able to articulate that, that's just going to better ensure that that fit is there, um, from the start, as opposed to what sort of happens now. And then I think we're excited to work on the guidance side, um, which is, you know, in the middle grades. Um, and, uh, you know, with our individual schools to figure out how can we create those, those, um, comp, you know, those communication pathways between Madison students and, um, and our seventh and eighth graders.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And thank you guys for this presentation. You're, one, you're doing such incredible work. Um, and hard work. I can, I know the complexity of even just finding CTE teachers right now. Um, certified teachers, like you are doing incredibly challenging work and, um, yeah, I want, I want both things to be true, like the right kids are getting to the school. And what feels like the big flag for me, just naming it, is that our schools, there are students in a school choice system are making informed choices, shoulder to shoulder with a counselor and that they know what they're signing up for. So that every school, not just in Madison Park, is getting a kid who understands what the options and the opportunities are there. They're not looking for football and ending up at a school that doesn't have it, or looking for automotive and ending up that has it. And it's not the first time we've been in a situation where we're hearing that like some middle school students are making really uninformed decisions and there's not a lot of oversight in the middle grades around those choices before they make their way to the enrollment office.
No, a hundred percent. And I think the, you know, our commitment on the early college and the career more broadly in the district is really about, uh, uh, you know, opening up exactly that, right? Of what you're talking about, which is what, and we, we did used to do this to a much better degree. Um, but this is, I think, one of unfortunately, kind of the, the systems that fell to the wayside, particularly post pandemic. Um, but you know, Madison Park does a, you know, a big, uh, career day where students and prospective parents can come in and take a look. Um, and then we used to open up the high schools in a similar way with a high school career fair. So those are the things we want to and need to get back to.
One of the positive things is that the industry and the partnerships are knocking at our door daily, waiting for our students to graduate, wanting to give our kids internships and co-ops. And we have to keep up with that number of, 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 um, amount of students that they're looking for. And we, we feel good about that, that we're having everyone from the industry knocking at our door to get our kids out in the industry.
And lastly, I would just add this, um, to your point, Mr. Cardet. Um, with the investments in counselors for our ninth grade students, coupled with the idea of reconfiguration of many of our high schools to secondary school communities, our younger students, grade seven and eight, are getting greater access to exploratory opportunities, to early college awareness and to those kinds of opportunities that don't loan themselves available in middle schools. And so more and more children will.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. More children will have access to good counseling. That's great. Yeah. My question is right now, given the, the kind of enrollment policy we have now, what percentage of kids are being administratively assigned to Madison Park who are not ready to be there or wanting to be there?
That's a great question. Um, Dr. Brown, I think you could probably answer that best.
Yes, uh, Dr. McIntyre, I think, uh, this year we averaged about 15% of those students out of, uh, uh, 300 freshmen that came in were administratively assigned.
So that, that, that goes back speaking to our whole, um, system around guidance, et cetera. So, so I guess question superintendent, this really goes back to you. Um, given the need for this policy for Madison Park, how are we dealing with guidance so that every single, we, we are assured that every single student is making an informed, an informed choice?
Yeah.
You know, are, you know, what kind of programs are we offering to make sure kids really get a sense of what's out there for them?
Yeah. So, um, so Chair, I think that this is, um, historically been an issue for us, um, where a certain portion of students don't put a choice form. Um, and so as a result, they then end up getting, um, administratively assigned, or they'll, the kind of, uh, you know, they'll put one choice and then, uh, they don't get that choice. So then they get, um, you know, uh, administratively assigned. Uh, so thi- this is something as we work backward with guidance, um, you know, with Director Chu in the secondary office, that we can just put a lot more emphasis on, right? Which is what is the process? Making sure that, um, you know, the, the eighth graders or the sixth graders, depending on, uh, the level that they're coming up at, um, you know, that we, we do the best we can to, um, help make parents aware of what the choices are and students, um, but also, you know, what the differences are between the schools. Um, and in the case of specialized schools, like is what I would consider Madison Park, that we put an extra emphasis on it, because it's going to require them to, to just do, do things much, much different. Um, and so that will be, that should be one of our metrics or our goals, um, looking across the system at administrative assignment. I don't, I used to be able to tell you that seven years ago, what the figure was. I couldn't tell you right now what it is at our secondaries. Um, but what I can tell you is that we can do a much better job with it, um, because we used to. So, um, I think, you know, this will, this will be an area that we, um, work systematically on during the summer.
Great. So we'd like to see all of our kids ending up in a place that it's going to help them to do the very best that they possibly can.
That's right.
Are, are there any more comments or questions? Well, hearing none, I, I want to thank you all for the presentation and, um, the committee looks forward to taking action on this proposal at our next meeting on June 7th. Thank you. We thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Will now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Parvex.
There's no public comment on reports.
Thank you. Any new business? Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
I just want to, I think we have to talk about the comments we heard during public comment around folks not being paid again. And the, this rate, coming back to this body. And so superintendent, I'm not sure what response you have or if things are already in motion with your team.
Yeah, things are already in motion. And we, we thought that all of, we, that, that, I mean, this was looked into before. We believed with the exception of particular ones that we were aware of, and it had to do with documentation. Um, you know, that those that, um, but I don't know, you know, until we dig into the, the couple of people that, um, testified tonight, but the team's already working on it. So, um, they'll outreach that to them tomorrow. And then I've asked them to take a look to make sure that everybody else has absolutely been paid. I think one of the things with the stipends that, um, in general, there was, it seemed to have been a disconnect was, um, you know, filling out the type of paperwork that, um, shows the work that was completed. And so therefore, um, you know, triggers payment. And so, um, I think we've addressed that and, um, you know, kind of, uh, talked to folks. So everybody knows what they need to do and what we need to do. Um, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean that, um, this wasn't something different than that. So I want to, that's why I want to take a look and, uh, our team is already on it.
Good. I'm not a head should roll kind of guy, but you know, there is just like the part of me that feels like, you know, if I was like a teacher and didn't get my grades in on time, like I get a letter to my file or whatever, like it just seems a little wild. I think if we were in any other sector, it's like, we're running payroll and you don't get people paid. It seems bonkers, but even more ludicrous is probably that these folks feel like they are not getting help when they call whatever helplines they're trying to access. Like they're showing up here, waiting for hours, because that's where they think they're going to get the best outcome. And that part is, you know, it's not even just like, we have a broken payroll system. It's like, we have a, then the support structure. It's like, we should go back and look at like, when did you call? What were your ticket numbers? Who did you speak to? Like, because the, the customer care experience for employees seems really.
Yeah. This comes to the, the point that you had asked about earlier, which is, you know, digging into systems. Um, and so, you know, clearly human capital for, it's a huge enterprise for us. Payroll is one component of that, in addition to hiring and hiring processes. Um, but that, you know, as we get the, you know, the new person in, um, and we get that, uh, chief appointed, um, you know, there's lots to be dug into here so that we can make sure we have systems that are doing the basic things that they should be doing. Um, so, and as you know, some of these are issues that extend back years. So they, it, it needs, uh, it needs attention. But we, in the case of the, the people that spoke tonight, we're already looking at that. And we will be doing kind of an back review all the way to kind of figure out what, who missed what at one point.
And I'm sure these folks all talk to one another in coalition and met, there's a possibility that some of the folks impacted couldn't be here tonight. So maybe it's even worth, you know.
Yeah, we are. We're, we're, we're looking. That's right. We are.
Yeah. Like, do you know, cause should you tell us, is there anyone in your community we should be reaching out to?
Correct. Well, in looking, I mean, look, we're looking at that group, right? Like it's, it's a defined group around MTL prep. So that's the group that we're looking at. And so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. That concludes our business for this evening. The next virtual school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, June 7th at 5:00 PM. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I can.
Thank you. Ms. Parvex, will you please call the role?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins? Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Miss, uh, Miss Pera, Miss Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Miss Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Good night.